John, can you hear us?
I can, yep.
Thank you.
Well.
No, no, we should. We might remember.
You wanna start?
Go for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Posture.
All right, I'll call the meeting in order at five thirty two. First item, any modifications to the agenda, or yeah, any additions to the agenda?
I, I would like to discuss the minutes situation a little bit. So it may be prudent, since we have guests, to, to do four, five and six instead of three.
Do three last.
Do it after our guests have had a chance to talk, and if they wanna go, they can go. Rather than wasting your time, because sometimes the minutes have taken a while.
Yeah, fine, yeah. So we'll skip to, uh, we'll move three to, to after six?
Yes, that'd be great.
And we'll skip to, uh, item number four, public comments. Is this guest? Have a comment?
John, you, you got anything for public comments?
Uh, no, nothing from me, just, just sitting in.
Wow.
Great.
And are you a Facetown resident or?
I'm a, I'm a Waitsfield resident, um, just recently acquired a piece of land in Facetown, so just, just trying to familiarize myself with, uh, what the planning commission's got going on. Yeah, just here out of curiosity more than anything else.
So we'll go to Sam Robinson from the Matter River Valley Planning District. And your annual report.
Awesome, thanks. Just take me a second to get it up, but it wouldn't be too long.
Can he see that?
Um, he's gonna share the screen.
Yeah, he should be able to once I. There.
Is this your report here, Sam, that we can?
Yep, you might know how to keep that.
All right. Beautiful. Gordon's board there. Where'd you take it from?
I actually didn't take it, I got it from a, it's a, I, I believe it's local to here, but I got it from a, it's an open source image, but it's credited in the, in the report, so, oh, actually, let me make sure.
This was from, from name, name or something.
There's a screen. Oh, I got it, sorry guys, there were new ones.
All right, can folks on Zoom see that?
Uh, I can, yep, all good.
Okay, awesome. Um, so sorry about that technical difficulty. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Sam Robinson, I work at the Matter River Valley Planning District. Um, and this is something we do every year, just a little presentation circuit of our annual data report. Um, but just to give you a little bit more of a background on the planning district, who we are and what we do. Um, Plan District is a tri-town planning entity, it works with Waitsfield, Warren and Facetown to advance a variety of different planning projects and initiatives. Um, and one of those annual tasks that we take on is data collection, analysis and, um, data sharing. So one of the ways we do that is through these kind of informal presentations with various town boards. But we also have a full written data report, which you guys are welcome to keep a copy over there. Um, it's also listed on our website. And then the last tool we have is something called the Matter River Valley Community Dashboard, it's an online data dashboard. It has a, a whole lot of what's included in the annual data report. Not everything is included, but it is also up to date with the most recent data as of twenty twenty four, so you're welcome to explore um, all of that on, uh, MRVPD.org when you get a chance after the presentation. But this will just be kind of an overview, some of the findings from this year's report. But more than anything, just kind of an announcement that the report is ready and available for anyone that has a use for it. So this slide here, um, you don't have to read the whole slide, I'm not gonna read it to you at this point, but the reason I put it up here is, um, we like to share this as something called the Matter River Valley Vision Statement. And I oftentimes include it in a lot of my presentations, just because I think it's really important to keep in mind when, um, we're analyzing data or kind of thinking about projects within the valley, because this vision statement uh, um, was developed in twenty fifteen through a community process that took into consideration each town plan and also provided, uh, opportunities for residents to voice what they saw as the core values of the Matter River Valley, so when we're thinking about, um, in terms of this data, and we're trying to understand what areas are we doing really well in, what areas could we be improving on in order to kind of work towards this vision? I think it's sort of good to just keep in mind, um, as we move through this. The general structure of the report is more or less as follows, we have kind of these three larger umbrella categories. And then as you drill in, we have, uh, some, some small, smaller subcategories within. And I just wanted to reiterate, this will just be a short little presentation, kind of announcing that all of that is out there and ready to be reviewed. Uh, we might touch on some of these a little bit, we might not touch on some of them at all. So I really encourage you to take a look at the full report or spend some time with the community dashboard. And as always, if, when you're looking through, if you have any questions, or you wanna just talk through it with someone, Josh and I are always at the office at the General Wheat House. Um, and you're welcome to just pop by if you wanna dive into it a little bit more. So jumping into some of the data, um, I wanted to start off just with the population of the Matter River Valley and see how it's changed over time. Um, so graph one here shows, um, the Matter River Valley population using decennial census figures from nineteen sixty to twenty twenty. And what we see overall is that the population has increased. Um, if you zoom into the nineteen ninety to twenty twenty period, we saw increases in Waitsfield, or increases between thirty percent in Waitsfield and sixty nine percent in Warren, um, and if you take that as an average from nineteen ninety to twenty twenty, that's a fifty one percent increase in the Matter River Valley's full-time population. So there's been some considerable increases. And if you compare it to the larger region, in this case the county, you'll see that Washington County experienced a nine percent increase in the same time period, um, indicating that the valley's population is increasing at a slightly quicker rate than the larger region. Moving on to trying to understand kind of like the more near-term changes. Um, here we have a graph that shows in blue the most recent twenty twenty, uh, decennial census population estimates for Warren, Waitsfield and Facetown. And to try and get a more like, you know, shorter term change, um, I have compared it with the twenty twenty two American Community Survey five-year estimates. I do wanna preface this comparison with a caveat that, uh, American Community Survey data has a lot larger margin of error, especially for small rural communities such as ours. So you have to take it with a bit of a grain of salt and understand that it's not, mo- most likely not a hundred percent perfect picture, but we're right smack dab in the middle of the decennial census year, so this is kind of, um, as best as, an estimate as we can get until around twenty thirty. Um, with that said, um, I've included margin of error bars with these, each data point, so if you look at kind of where the orange bar ends, that would be like the midpoint of the error, and then you have the positive error and the negative error below each point. Um, to kind of understand what level of error we're dealing with, uh, for Facetown's twenty twenty two estimate, it represents plus or minus a hundred and fifty five residents. Um, and Warren had the largest margin of error in this comparison with plus or minus three hundred and five residents. But if you compare the midpoint, so again, kind of the top of the bars, um, what this estimates is that there's been approximately ten percent decrease in the Matter River Valley's full-time population since twenty twenty. Um, that would be equivalent to five hundred and thirty four residents. And the majority of that decrease occurred in Warren, um, which wa- was predicted to have lost, uh, two hundred and forty one full-time residents since twenty twenty. Again, we'll have to kind of see, um, what actually, you know, as we get more reliable data at the next decennial census, we'll have a better understanding of how this shift has occurred, but, um, this is what we have found in this year's report at least.
And when you pursue that, will you be looking at, um, people's jobs, if you will? What they did, are these online workers that are moving in, are they?
We do, do an analysis of employment, and part of that includes, um, an estimate of the percentage of residents that work from home. That is also using ACS data, um, so.
The margin of error.
There's a bit of margin of error, um, there might be other resources out there to get a better understanding of that. But most of the state level, um, employment data, as far as I'm aware, doesn't have any kind of tracking for that, so we tend to use the ACS for that.
We could ask our postman to do it.
You could, yeah.
Push a mail.
Nothing to say to census here, done by a postmaster now.
Any other questions here?
So, so that shows that every, every town is reducing population compared to our twenty twenty numbers.
That's what it's showing, but if you, I mean, it's, I'd say, because if you take the, if the margin of error is more accurate on the upper end, then maybe there's a slight increase, but, um, yeah, if you take the midpoint, then showing that will then decrease.
I, I was crunching home purchase numbers since twenty twenty for last week's meeting, or last month's meeting, and I was, I'm sort of curious to know if we've gone up or down from the twenty twenty census, because so much has changed since twenty twenty.
Well, we get into a little bit about, uh, property transfer tax statistics later on, so you'll get to see some home sales and all of that. Um, so moving on to, oh, whoops, um, moving on to the median age. So here I have, um, decennial census years for the median age of, uh, the valley towns of Facetown, Waitsfield, Warren, but then also the state and the country. Um, and it's not uncommon for, uh, areas median age to increase, but what we saw when looking at the numbers this year and last year actually, was that the Matter River Valley's median age is increasing faster than the state and the country. Waitsfield is, um, increasing more in line with the state level increase, so thirty two percent in the state, thirty nine percent in Waitsfield. When you look at, especially Warren, uh, Warren's median age has increased quite a bit since nineteen ninety.
Is it just because people won't die? Or is it because?
Yeah.
Yeah. We aren't bringing in young people.
I, I, I think it probably has something to do with, um, housing. Um, you know, it's, Warren especially has a, a high, um, a high number of like second homes. So I think the housing market is just generally more expensive, which, um, it can be more difficult for younger people to afford to live there, and this is just speculation, this is kind of where my mind goes, but.
Because I always joke that people here, you know, they, they don't get old, they just wake up dead one day.
Well, I mean, if there's, if there's broken people and you're losing young people, it would make, it would get older.
And I don't have a, um, I don't have this graph in this presentation, but there is a graph of kind of like a population pyramid showing different age groups and what you do see it when you look, I think I compared two thousand and twenty twenty and all of the groups below, I think fifty five shrunk. And then all of the groups below, above fifty five kind of ballooned out, so you might find that one interesting. But I heard, I thought I had another question coming, but yeah. Um, so just for the sake of consistency, we don't have to spend a ton of time on this, I just wanted to show kind of that short-term comparison again. We have the, uh, margin of error bars here, and, um, it was interesting to see that, the thing that caught my attention here is, you see, obviously Waitsfield has a huge margin of error, um, Warren has a similar sized margin of error to Facetown, but Facetown appears, regardless of if you take the high error, the lower error bar or the midpoint, it shows a slight decline in its median age, at least in the short term. So it'd be interesting to see, um, as time progresses, how that changes or if it all changes. So, um, this graph here moves us onto a different section of the report, this is from the Community Social Services section. Um, and the reason I wanted to touch on it is because within this area of the report, we saw some pretty drastic changes last year. Um, part of the reason for that is because we didn't have a data report for four years. So you're kind of backfilling, and that's when we discovered this, but this shows the Matter River Valley Interfaith Council's emergency assistance provided. Um, and this is in dollars from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty three. The Interfaith Council provides, um, all sorts of different assistance to the valley, part of it is through emergency, but they also do a lot of fun things like summer camps, et cetera, but this is assistance for housing, utilities, transportation, in some cases like tuition for school, um, really anything that a resident needs, they can go to the Interfaith Council and ask for some assistance and, um, they'll oftentimes provide it. But from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty two, we saw some pretty, uh, large increases, there was a two hundred and forty percent increase in the total amount of, uh, funds distributed to valley residents. But what we saw, um, in this year was there's, it dropped back down, um, by fifty five percent from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. I was talking last year with the Interfaith Council about this two, two hundred and forty percent increase to get an understanding of like, what was happening there, do they have any insights as to maybe why that increased so much? And their speculation at the time was just based on the fact that during COVID, they were receiving so many donations themselves that they were able to give more as a result of that, um, and we'll have to see you next year, maybe it's kind of returned back to a baseline, um, that we're far enough removed from that. So.
Do the towns fund that too?
I don't know if the town, I don't, I think it's mainly donation-based, um, I would have to check, I don't know if it's funded on a regular basis. I can get back to you on that though.
I, I didn't.
Right here.
If it's in the town, it's not a huge number.
Oh, I did not mean to skip.
When, at the town meeting when they went through it, I was just looking, and it's like. Um at the time, when they went through it, I was just looking, and it's like.
Mad River Valley.
Interstate Council.
Interstate Council.
Sorry, oh, you're good. No, I was trying to jot a note, but for some reason I can't type right now. Um yeah, I'm not sure, but I can check too, and.
We can look at our town report.
Um so this next graph is also from the Community Social Services section, it's the total annual visits to the Matterover Valley Community Pantry. And last year we saw a similar trend from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, there was a uh a hundred and forty percent. Increase in the total number of annual visits. From twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, however, it looks like it's kind of leveled off, it's remained at around the twenty-seven hundred annual visits. Um and this is, I just thought this was interesting, uh kind of dovetails well with the MatterofValley Well-being Survey that we did last year. Uh that survey has has been run three times now, and there's a, there's a line of questioning in there that talks about like volunteerism. But also donations and kind of how likely are you to volunteer your time versus how likely are you to. Volunteer your money, and for the first time since that survey has run, respondents were more likely to donate their time than to donate their money. Um so who knows, I just thought that was interesting that we're kind of seeing this leveling off in the Community Social Services section. That shift in the well-being survey as well. So now getting into some information about home sales in the MatterofValley, this graph is a stacked graph that shows combined. Home sales for Warren Waitsfield and Facen, and I broke it out by vacation homes and primary resident sales. And what we saw last year was, and what you can see here is in general, there's a a higher number of vacation home sales than primary resident sales. Um. And just to give you a couple of numbers, you can see that there's kind of, the the high point for primary resident sales was in the early two thousands. Um there's a low point around twenty-ten, and then from twenty around twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty, we saw some increases in both. Primary residence and secondary resident sales, uh primary resident sales increased by a hundred and fifty-five percent from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty. And vacation home sales increased by a hundred and sixty-two percent. Um but from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, we started to see this kind of shift a little bit. Um the number of homes, primary residence home sales dropped by sixty-four percent from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. And in twenty twenty-three, we had the lowest number of reported primary resident sales. In the entire study period, so lowest since nineteen eighty-eight. Um and that was a total of twenty-five home sales, and vacation homes experienced a similar decrease, it was a decrease of fifty-one percent. From twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, and the total uh secondary home sales. Amounted to a hundred and ten, which was below the average for the study period, but not the lowest recorded, so starting to see the home sales. Um dip a little bit in recent years. Okay, whoops. Um so this is getting into the uh property transfer tax statistics, and I actually, before coming to do last year's presentation. At Facen, I was in the parking lot, and I got an email from the Property Transfer Tax Statistic Office. And they'd answered a question that I had asked earlier that year, um I had asked, is there a way to track primary residence? Gains or losses, and it turns out that there is, um so when I'm saying a primary residence loss, what I mean is essentially a primary residence that's being sold. As a vacation home, and then the opposite representing a vacation home that's sold to someone that intends to use it as a primary residence, and the way that they do this. Is on these tax statistics, there's a seller use fee and a buyer use fee. So if the seller is primary residence, buyer is secondary residence, then that would be a residential loss in this case. Um so when you look at this graph, if you zoom into like the twenty twelve to twenty eighteen period, you see that on average. There's either an equal number or more primary residence gains. Um and then when you shift to the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, you start to see more primary residence losses. Than primary residence gains, um to break it down a little bit more for you, uh from, where is it?
What happened in two thousand eighteen, that that it shifted so hard?
Yeah, I don't know, um. It.
So you're saying that. If people are turning them into vacation homes from primary resident homes based on a fee paid at closing?
Property tax, transfer tax.
Mm-hmm.
When you buy a home, you have to fill out a property transfer tax form.
Yeah.
Forget it's very significant, one percent or something like that. And what I'm hearing Sam say is that on that form, there's a tick box saying that you're going to reside in it permanently or.
They, yeah, they essentially ask what the, what your intended use or what your historical or intended use for the property is like. Um so I guess there's probably an element, I don't know if there's a way to like.
So when I bought my house in twenty nineteen, I had a house in Boston, and I didn't know what I was gonna do, and now I live here full-time.
Mm-hmm.
But I wonder how I'm recorded.
There probably is an, I don't know that there's, there probably is an element of like um interpretation to it, I don't actually know.
It's a difficult question to answer, Doug Lister and I have talked about it before, they send out these surveys to try to get information from people, are you renting it or you're not renting it? Where's that at? So that the answer, I was just really interested to know how they were getting that data.
Mm-hmm. Um so just to uh kind of explain the potential gain or loss here, so from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. There were a hundred seventy-four residential losses, but there were also ninety-five residential gains. So we might be missing a couple, but at least what what this is telling us is there's essentially um a loss of seventy-nine. Long-term or primary residence housing units uh from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three.
And this is Facen, Warren, Waitsfield.
Yeah.
Those three towns, not Ducksbury, not Moretown.
Not Ducksbury or Moretown, no.
Warren, like, a lot of people were living in the condos, like, full-time. And then as part of the twenty twenty surge and the uh short-term rental surge, they got kicked out of the street because they could make more money renting in short-term. So we've lost a lot of residential at that point, but I don't know, I don't think that would pay your charge.
That wouldn't hit the chart, as far as I'm aware, unless there was a sale.
Well, they sell, I mean, someone figured out how much money they can make by, they sell it, and then the new owner wants to do short-term rentals.
Okay.
Paid to have a local living in.
Or they kick out a full-time renter.
Which is what's.
For Airbnb, and then there's no transfer.
Yeah. So it's worse than the chart shows.
Maybe.
Um so now moving on to another very timely mention, um this this graph shows the total active short-term rentals. By month in the MatterofValley, and this is whole home units only, so if someone's renting their entire home as a short-term rental. And this is also uh the combined valley. Um and what I saw when looking at this was that from twenty, January twenty eighteen to. Kind of end of January twenty or end of twenty twenty-two, we saw slow and steady growth in the number of. Monthly active short-term rental units, thirty-three percent over that time period. Definitely pretty volatile throughout that, but the trend line was kind of slow and steady um towards a thirty-three percent increase. And then um when you zoom in.
And that coincides with the huge property tax increases.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Are you referring to uh?
The big jump.
This year?
Yeah, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm. So that's, yeah, that's kind of where my eyes went too, looking at January, so thirty-three percent increase in this area. And then within January twenty twenty-three to January twenty-two twenty-four, we saw a forty-two percent increase in the number of uh. Monthly whole-home short-term rental units. So it'll be interesting to see, especially now that um Warren is. Taking a study to kind of understand their own short-term rental market, uh we helped them last year interview vendors and. Ultimately decided on one, and then they were figuring out the ordinance that they wanted to write, and they're getting to a point that that's ready, so. This year we'll be starting that study, and um we're committed to, if we've sent all the materials to other towns too, so if anyone's interested, we're committed to helping as well. But it'll at least be interesting to see kind of what we find from that first study with Warren, um and see how this plays out a little bit more detail. So I'm gonna.
Look, Sam.
Yeah.
We've talked about these two charts.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm trying to understand them. This chart here, the orange is actually sales that were vacation homes sold to someone who's gonna use it as a vacation home.
Um let me, so they're probably. There could be both mixed, that top graph, so it wouldn't necessarily be dependent on the other person's. Um like if it was at the time of being sold, if it was a vacation home, it would be recorded in that chart, regardless of if it went to someone that was gonna be using it as a primary residence. After the sale.
Okay.
Whereas the bottom one would be the transfer.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, this orange is showing homes that were. Were vacation homes, they're sold.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, you don't know what's gonna happen to them.
Yeah.
And the blue is um resident of people living here, who are selling the homes, and again, we don't know what they're gonna do with them.
Mm-hmm.
And then this is a different chart from different data set.
Um. Yes, so the home sale data comes from Vermont Housing Finance Agency.
Yeah.
But I believe they use property transfer tax statistics as well. I don't know their exact methodology, but we get that from their community profiles data. But I believe they're from the same data set.
Hmm. And this is showing the situation getting substantially worse for having homes available for prior residents. And I guess that shows a big thing, but then it starts dropping, so I'm just trying to.
The overall difference was seventy-nine housing units, he said, which is the total loss of residential.
And the bottom graph just shows housing units that resulted in like. A loss or a gain, it doesn't show all the sales, so it might not be a perfect comparison in that sense. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
What I'm seeing though, I mean, just looking at this data, it's. There's an awful lot of vacation homes here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and it's it's getting even more.
When the economy went bad in, when was that, two thousand eight, nine, ten? It hit here later, um the bankers and economists, my husband was in a meeting. And they said if the second home market failed, then the state of Vermont, state would fail.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder what that does now.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about like the age demographics of our town, and as they're aging, getting, I mean, anecdotally. I'm learning, meeting a lot of friends here who are in my cohort, the age cohort, and they're all coming in because they're retiring. Okay, I'm not seeing too many people coming in or coming here to start a business or work. I'm mostly saying people coming in and either converting their home, which was a vacation or a second home. To now full-time residency as they retire from other states, or move in here to retire, so this kind of. I think it kind of drives a little bit that as we're aging, as people are retiring again.
Mm-hmm.
And. Um but this this really surprises me, how many second homes are still here?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Well.
Yeah, you read the statistic, only forty-three percent of homes in Facen are, you're kind of, fifty-seven are vacation.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's worse than Warren.
Yeah.
Um well, I appreciate the the questions, and it is, it is an interesting. Like, when you look at all these pieces together, it is kind of an interesting puzzle to try and figure out, so.
And it actually, back when we had the found, the real foundation formula for property taxes, we benefited from that. And now it hurts us.
We benefited from it because.
Because they didn't have kids in our schools, they weren't running the roads, and so our costs were low, and they.
Subsidized.
Your, yeah, they subsidized it, so we offered very high-quality education.
Mm-hmm.
And now our education, you know, is plummeting, and um our taxes are skyrocketing.
And we. Second homes are not able to keep pace, paid for.
Well, we send money to others.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, that's Act sixty, that's correct.
Sixty-sixty-eight and one twenty-six, one forty-six, every iteration that they've.
This one here, do you have this broken down by town at all somewhere? I I certainly could, yeah, it wouldn't be difficult at all if you want to see.
Cause STRs are supposed to be paying it for their rooms' tax also.
Okay.
Right?
Um I, yeah, they are actually, um I believe you're, I don't know what the mechanism is, I'm assuming. Like, I'm assuming if you make a certain amount, then it would be hard, I don't know if it's like self-reporting or not, but I imagine. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the guy I bought my house from, he had had it on Airbnb for every day, they were, they asked for sixty-five thousand dollars to closing for the ninety-seven rooms and meal tax.
Wow.
Because he wasn't paying.
Well, there you go. But yeah, I could break this up pretty if you want. Here, so this is a, like, basically a summer or winter comparison. Um so we tried to understand like, how do first quarter meals, rooms, alcohol, tax receipts perform compared to third quarter? And what we saw is the third quarter experienced slow and steady growth, um whereas first quarters seemed to be a little bit more volatile. Perhaps weather-dependent, um and kind of flatline or a little decrease over the time period. Um but just zooming into like the very end of this chart, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we see the opposite, the. The winter receipts go up a bit, summer receipts go down a bit, um and that winter was a pretty good winter. And then I mainly am highlighting this because I also have a little bit about trail use here. Um we do trail counting through actually Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, Keith comes out and installs trail counters. At um a variety of different locations throughout the valley, the way they do it is there's like an eight-week window. And there are two trail counters that get rotated between each location. And it just so happened that at the time of the trail counting in twenty twenty-three, it was a really. Rainy period, so I just wanted to note that here, um overall trail usage was down in twenty twenty-three, you can see. Um the corresponding decreases, some of these locations were new, so we don't have a change for them, but um. Let me see, uh to to provide a little bit of context, during the nine-week period that trail counters were installed, forty-two percent of the days saw some amount of rain. Um and it was not uncommon, so like Blueberry Lake and Revolution Trail Systems, sixty-four percent of those days received some amount of rain with. Thirty percent of the days experiencing over a quarter inch. Um when they were installed at Hospur Heart of the Valley and Chase Brooktown Forest, fifty percent of the days. Had some rain, twenty-one percent experienced over a quarter inch, and that was kind of a common theme for the other locations as well. So I don't know that it's a perfect representation of trail usage, so I just wanted to touch on it here because I know that's. Pretty important part of the valley and the local economy, so if you're thumbing through it and didn't have that context, I just wanted to highlight it here, I do think we mentioned it in the report. Uh but just wanted to touch on it a little bit and kind of ties into the meals, rooms, and alcohol tax receipts slide on the last page. Um I'm gonna buzz through this a little bit, cause I'm going quite a bit over my time, but this is, no, that's okay. This is a um new area of the report, we use the Vermont Natural Resource Council's utilization database to understand. How and where is land being parceled in the valley? So this shows the um change in acreage by parcel size for the MatterofValley, so you have the various. Categories of parcel size on the X-axis and the percent change on the Y. So essentially, by looking at this, what I see is um parcels in the size range of fifty to two hundred acres are being. Parceled, in other words, I guess I didn't define that, basically breaking up land into smaller and smaller pieces. Those groups are being parceled more than other categories, there are some, there's some parcelization occurring in ten to twenty-five. And zero to two as well, but this is kind of the lion's share of parcelization. Um throughout the study period, I did talk to Jamie Fidel, who's from. Uh Vermont Natural Resource Council and played a big part in developing this data set. To see if there's a way, that was a huge undertaking for them, because they did it for the whole state. But I was meeting with him to see if there's a way we could kind of recreate this on a smaller scale for just the MatterofValley, so he sent me a whole bunch of fun stuff, and I'm gonna try and. Bring us a little bit more up to date in this year's data report, which can't believe it, but we're already starting to. Work on that as well, so we'll see if next year I can get another updated number to twenty twenty-four for that. Um and then the last graph here is also from the Vermont Natural Resource Resource Council Parcelization Database. This shows the change in acreage by um parcel type. So you can see woodland parcels are being parceled more um than others. The other category is um the definition just says utility electric, utility other. Miscellaneous and open land, so just like kind of otherwise vacant land, that's not considered to be woodland. Um and woodland parcels can include like a small camp, but generally speaking, they're mostly undeveloped. Um and then the last really quick thing, this just shows the land conservation by type in the MatterofValley. It doesn't look a whole lot different than last year's report, but there were some added parcels to this year. Um last year we were. Um, last year we were current through twenty-twenty-one, and now we're current through twenty-twenty-three. Uh, Green Mountain National Forest added um five hundred ninety-four acres and the total increase was seven hundred forty-one acres that I had found from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three. So uh twenty-seven percent of the oh, where is this? Oh, yeah, so twenty-eight percent of the Matter of Rally is classified as conserved uh as of twenty-twenty-three. But that's, that's all I got for you guys tonight. Happy to chat about any other outstanding questions or.
What I found interesting, you can just back up.
Yeah, let me know when.
Right there and the one before.
Oh, okay.
And that one, the the back backup.
Okay.
That, yeah. Those two slides to me are interesting. We're gonna be talking about our twenty, our 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 new town plan. And maybe I'm biased, but I've been reading our current town plan. And the town plan was written um advertising how attractive our community is, bucolic nature scenes and trying to, that was a selling point for Faceton. And in that town plan are all sorts of phrases about objectives. Trying to maintain that bucolic nature and trying to uh preserve nature and conserve and stuff. Well, this is telling me, and and also there was a chart in there about showing tracts of land and how parcelization um adversely affects the wildlife. Okay, and what I'm seeing here is that there's a disconnect between what the town plan says we're supposed to be doing and the objectives and what's happening. That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Well, town plan also talks about housing and, you know. There's there's need for other things other than conservation. And I'm not disagreeing. I mean, I think there's a way we can do it uh correctly.
I I I'm just saying we're gonna have to update our town plan to be realistic.
Yeah.
Before we pave paradise and put up a parking lot.
Well, and the state figuring out education funding. Because that's really where our expenses are.
So you're you're, I think, I hear you right, earlier suggesting that part of this parcelization um is encouraged by some aspects of our town budgeting process.
Part properties.
The school budgeting.
Yeah, but, but. Yeah, so.
Cause even if our schools cut their budgets, our taxes still go up. And so there's no incentive, and there hasn't been since Act Sixty was initiated for that to happen. And there were people who tried, but there's no incentive for it.
So help me understand the parcelization. How's the parcelization?
People can't afford it and the um current use isn't making enough of a dent anymore to encourage people to keep it.
So they're trying to monetize.
Yeah, or if they've got kids and you say, good God, I hope that my kid can have a house would be my guess, but I bet they're selling it to these people who are coming with a lot more money than locals.
Any other questions? Hate to burn the mood down.
While you're giving a presentation, I pulled up the actual document which he has there and like, there's a lot more information on the charts. It's a very good read. You guys did work really, really hard together. I really appreciate all the work you did, but like to really, like, there's a whole paragraph of population to understand what that chart's actually showing you. Probably encourage everyone to take a look at it after all these things.
Nice, well, I'm glad that it can be of use. So thanks for having me.
Since quite like some of this data, if we needed it it it's what we're working, we're gonna be working on town plan, we're gonna need Faceton items. Do you have some of that info where we ask and might be able to?
Definitely, yeah, we we have a whole um basically just like a stack of Excel spreadsheets. So if I know what you need and to be, I mean, it's very quick. I can make something like ten minutes if you need something in particular, so just stay in touch and let me know how I can help.
I get busy over next one out here, so.
Se- several of the charts that he has were blended there, but in the actual report, it shows Faceton like the vacation home sales are predominantly.
Yeah.
Pretty much entirety. Well, thanks for having me, guys.
Thank you so much.
See you next time.
And thanks for helping out the day.
Give your mom a hug.
No, not tonight. I got I got meetings every week though, so.
All right.
I'll see you later.
Tell your mom I'm thinking of her.
I will, thank you.
Right. Next up, uh Nikki from Vermont, Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission.
Well, first I want to know who you are. Could you introduce yourselves, please?
I'm like for business, I live up over that way. Um, I don't know what else to tell you about me. I've been living here full-time since twenty-twenty. Um, during the planning commission, I'm the most junior personal planning commission. Um, glad to be here and helping to figure this all out and a lot of work in that town plan.
I'm Michael Dool, um, I'm a mechanical engineer by trade and I grew up on a farm. And I've always had a dream of having some land and being able to enjoy it and nature and help preserve wildlife and ecology. My first school was at the Forestry. Now I got a bit in forest. Um, so that's kind of like my, one of the reasons I chose to move here um was because of the bucolic nature and all the recreation opportunities is um allowed to, you know, I've lived in a lot of places that had been developed and literally watched them pave paradise and put our parking lots everywhere. And um I just have an interest in trying to figure out how to manage this, so we don't lose what we have. Um, the forest that we steward right now was destroyed by the um sheep industry hundred and fifty, two hundred years ago. And um the forest has come back. Has been logged, is now producing, it's producing timber that we can all use. Um, it's also a lot of wildlife in there now. We've got moose and some moth net tracks the other day and fish here, stuff like that, and animals coming in. And we're hoping to preserve that for the future.
And you're on the planning commission.
I'm on a planning.
I'm Andrew McNeil, I'm on the commission, also our liaison for the Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah, I've seen your name.
Nice to meet you. Um, I went to high school in Faceton, I moved away for a while and came back a year ago. My wife live on Airport Road and I worked in Burlington for a real estate developer.
Um, Jason, also I'm the Z A. Been here, been in Vermont, uh, three or four years. Um, grew up in Southern Connecticut and then spent twenty years in West Georgia and all the line. Um, and just helping the plan information out.
Hi, I'm Fred, Fred Graves.
Yes.
And I'm a native, um, and I run a small business here.
Native to Faceton or Mad River or?
I was born in the kingdom, but my husband's. Yeah, but I moved down this area when I was eight.
Great. Okay, yeah, I just want, I wanted to familiarize myself because I I know that uh Jason said that you have a pretty new planning commission, so um and you obviously are interested in updating your town plan, so I kind of, I I can give you an overview if if we want to start um there. Um, I'm pretty new to the Regional Planning Commission, about a year in, but my background's landscape, architecture and master planning. Um, so it's very familiar to me, but learning the dynamics of Vermont government and the structure and how it works, it's been a great um experience and learning curve, so. Um, you know, the the main mission of CDR PC is to assist um, you know municipalities um to work cooperatively with the towns, um addressing mutual issues. Um, we have a statutory responsibility to consult with municipalities twice in an eight-year period. So your town plan update has to be updated every eight years. Um let's see, we um, we, our purpose, we share information, we provide resources and services, technical assistance. Um, we also, with these statutory consults, we like to hear about your planning endeavors or where you are in your town plan uh implementation. Um uh amendments for town plans can occur anytime if it's a minor change, so you don't um, it doesn't change the expiration date of your plan, but if you wanted to make amendments within that eight years, you can, you can do so. Um, there's the timeline, so with that eight-year period, generally the first five years is implementation of your town plan. Um, between year four and six, which is about where you all are, um, you would schedule a first consultation with us, RPC and we would um review your town plan just to get an idea of where you are and and what um what progress has been made. Um, then in year seven, that's when we have a second consultation and it's typically this is where you're getting to your final stages and you'll start sending us planned draft chapters so that we can review it in um comparison with the municipal plan review tool checklist. So that's um, I can explain that as well to you. Um, this, uh, sorry. Let me just go back. So year eight, so that's your final year, that's when you approve your plan. Um, or sorry, adopt your plan, you know, local adoption, and then you go through the select board um who will um formally adopt it. Um, I have included a sheet, I have some printouts for you, but I've in included a sheet that you will want to hold on to, which a lot of towns ask for, and it's just the process of and and timeline for noticing hearings and um, you know, scheduling for reviews and everything, so.
That the combination document with the regulatory regulations. So the combination.
This is more for your municipal plan um hearing process and then through.
You know how many days before you have to notify and what are these places that has to be listed.
Correct, and who it goes to, and yes, so it's it's kind of a a step-by-step process, but if you ever have questions, just call me or email and I can answer it. Um, so, once you adopt your plan, um you can, you don't, you're not required to have CDR PC approve it. But a lot of towns do that because they get um, you know, funding and uh incentives, um, or acts, sorry, access to um incentive programs and uh, let's see, you get eligibility to charge impact fees apply for the municipal planning grants and participate in state designation programs. I don't know. I know Faceton's not, it doesn't have a village center, right? So it's I don't know how much of a priority that is, but we can discuss that further on. Um, because we are, I'm sure you know, or if you don't know, the Act One Eighty-One was big legislative changes in Vermont this year, so that's big um land use reform, Act Two Fifty, so there's a lot more uh, what's the word, flexibility and building housing. Of course, we are, where's the funding coming from, but it's, it's definitely um, a busy time. Um, with the requirements with uh the new legislation, we as the regional planning commission, we have to produce a regional future land use map. So that is um where essentially every town builds its own future land use plan, but now they are putting it on the region to develop a comprehensive plan. So our goal this year is to go visit each town, each municipality and review your land use plans and intentions. I even brought a copy of your, um, we're not gonna do that in this uh session, that would take longer and we're still developing the land use map. But this is your um zoning district map, which just kind of identifies, have you, have you been these are in your town plan right now or on your website. Um uh, so, yeah, so that's another big thing happening. Um let me go back to, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry, go.
Yeah, so I asked Sam, in two thousand eleven, the Mad River Valley Planning District did a blowout for Faceton Wakefield and Warren.
Okay.
Um, based on our information in our town plan and land use regs, where housing would occur in the next however many years, do you remember?
I don't remember.
Um but it did not help for any setbacks from streams or anything like that, and I think so I've been calling it the multi-useless tool. And so a useful tool would be really nice, and maybe that's what your document would provide us.
Um
which document, sorry, uh, the one that you would be developing where um development should occur?
Yes, yes, and that um with looking at flood river, I think you have flood hazard regulations in town, and you're also, I I read in your town plan that you're looking, you're considering doing river corridor protection regulations, which is, there's model language.
That's coming down the pipe from.
Yes.
State anyway.
Yeah, so you can develop your own, um, but then the the board, the review board will, you know, they will.
We have the safest roads in the state.
Yes, that's right.
So I think ours would be unique.
Okay, yes, so would you, are you saying that you'd like to?
I don't know, if you've got free stuff, we'll take.
Yes, if you're interested. We, um, let's see, Lincoln, Fresca and Brian Boyd do um a lot of the work with flood hazard and river corridor protection, so I they, I have a sheet in here with all of our contact information and whose specialty is is what, so. Um, but going back to the town plan, um, I've also brought an example of our municipal plan review tool. So this, it's very, it's very dry, but it it's really what um, we use to cross-check the town plan update. Um, you are following required elements from four, three, eight, two, which are basically your chapters, your your land use chapter, your housing, economic, um, natural resources, energy. Um, state planning goals, um, four, three, oh, two, that's, you know, with compact village centers and flood resiliency, so you, I'm not gonna go into detail of all of this, but there's updates in this document that of that taken into account, Act One Seventy-One, are you familiar with Act One? That's um, forest integrity, so it's to promote habitat connect, uh habitat blocks and forests, uh, sorry, and wild mud quarters. Um, so that's a requirement from uh, like, you know, the state that you have to uh, show planning in the back, which actually you do in your town plan. Um, so it's, it's, your town plan seems really um strong on natural resources and conservation and preservation, so.
What I'm impressed with our plan is it has a lot of detail, really well-written. I don't understand who stewards it.
Right, well, the people should be.
The people.
Yeah, the community.
And their LURs.
Yeah.
And you're, well, your select board uh makes a lot of decisions as well.
But not about the development or anything else, it's the town plan and the land use regs that dictate what people can do or or restrict what people can do.
Do you have a DRV?
Yeah.
Yes, so and in your, I haven't reviewed your regulations, but I'm happy to. Um, if we schedule that, um, but I, I'm not sure if you have, do they have regulations for site control or character of development, things like that, okay? So.
We've got a pretty heavy document for how you watch.
I, yes, I'd imagine so, and I I think I also read that you have a lot of, you've had a lot of increased applications in um subdivision, so which would, I'm showing what Sam had shown, it makes sense. Um, but yeah, second homes is definitely um um, I think the the region's aware of that, so it's, yeah, just a a fact. Um.
So if I understand you correctly, your organization has templates or checklists that our plan needs to follow, is that correct?
Yes, well, you, yes, every town plan has kind of a formula with the chapters, which is the way they're set up, but you and you would go through the history and Kind of a formula with the chapters, which is the way they're set up, but you, and you would go through the history and. And uh statistics and all of that, but um, there's specific. Um, requirements from the state to comply with that, now, if you were to have us approve it. Through the region, then it would have to tick all those boxes. Um, so as as a locally adopted plan, you, yes, that's, you can adopt it. But if you want the incentives from the state, then you go through the approval process.
And what are the incentives from the state?
Uh, so, let's see, I wrote some of them down, but. Um, there's uh, you have the eligibility to charge impact fees. Um, that's uh with like through your infrastructure. Um, but I believe you rely a lot on Wakefield Services or Infrastructure and.
No, we don't really rely on Wakefield or or Warren, but we we work hand in hand with with Wakefield, because we share a long border with them.
I I just heard that Bston and Wakefield are doing a master plan together.
We are work, we signed on on a municipal planning grant. For the Irisville Commercial District, something to do with wetlands and development in that area, because. Basically, that 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 area, all the hill runs down the hill from Fason into Wakefield, so we work with them, and we have a really good working relationship with.
Okay, yes.
Basically our town center.
Okay, and that's um, what, how was the flooding impact, I know there's been a few road and culvert uh. Projects here, but Keith's been working on, is that right, do you know?
Oh.
Bridge repairs?
Two bridges are.
Yes.
One on his road and one on mine.
Okay, yeah, so, there, yeah, but it's the area that's the master planning, that's is was.
It's entirely in Wakefield, we just.
Okay, oh, right, yeah, okay.
Right, they flooded it, and then humans with state permission cleared it, and then the beaver. Put us right to shame and flooded it worse.
Where was this from?
Um, right behind ICS.
The stadium?
Yeah.
Awesome, dog.
Stadium.
That open area.
Past the stadium, it used to be, basically, it's right through a beaver pond, and and they cleaned it out again, or it?
Further over.
Further over.
It was, I mean, it was almost up onto the, to the slow road, you know, by the Howard Bank or.
Okay, so what about like Matter of Canadian City back, back in then?
Yeah, but right up almost to ICS, whatever that road is called.
Carol Road, it was Carol Road.
Yeah, but this is the one that just goes from the Howard Bank around.
Yeah.
Slow road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At one point, was it just a farm field?
I remember the, seeing the beaver dam, like, what, what, when did this happen, like, I've.
Uh, the week after Christmas, it was.
Was like, just recently, okay, alright.
But it was turned into a wetland in the last fifteen years, twenty years or?
That's been a wetland, that's why the land was donated to Skadion, because it was wetland and not developable.
Gotcha.
So this is where the boardwalk is in front of Lawson's, you're talking?
Well, it adjoins that, but it's over further towards Mad River Green and Shaw's.
So they killed beavers this year?
No, they just went up and dug up the, the dams that the beaver had built. And the beaver.
I'm trying to understand where, I don't know if you can see this, so. I go up Slow Road to the Ice Link.
Yeah, but you could, we, it was, the flooding was right there on the road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I didn't go up, I know that the snowmobile club, or some of the people on the snowmobile club were involved and. Clearing it for the state.
Mm-hmm.
We have Beaver Prominence Top of Randall. Right near Beaver Pond, they kept backing up that culvert, and finally, they put a much larger culvert in to stop it, but for a while, they're. Metal stuff, they had to clean it once a week, there's a machine there.
Those guys are busy, those beaver.
Yeah, I saw the beavers, they're huge, yeah, but I mean.
They used to be eight hundred pounds to teach off, um, they used to be up to eight hundred pounds in the old days, because they don't stop growing. And their teeth don't stop growing, it was crazy.
That's a huge beaver.
That's huge. Big source, right?
Can you put it on the street so I can?
Anyway.
So Nikki, the impact fees are what a developer would pay during a project to mitigate future costs for the town?
Uh, that would a developer?
Yeah.
Uh, if, yes.
In this scenario, we'd be, we would be able to charge that, facing could collect those impact fees.
Yes.
If we follow the regional plan.
Yes.
And that would help us with our, like, roads and stuff like that.
You can apply for state grants, uh, transportation grants, there's specific, there's a lot of them, I can send you a list.
We have a lot, which we do, we do the grants and aid and the E-Trans and then RGRP and energy grants and all that, because we've. Ben, we we get it approved through you guys.
Yes, and most towns do the approval.
So the twenty twenty plan was approved, uh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, um. So that hopefully answers your question, and then, of course, the municipal planning grant is still open if you. Want to apply, but you'd have to rush, um, it's a March thirty-first deadline, but um, there's. A list of, of eligibility. Um, but it also, what I was gonna say is there's a fall winter round that will come out later this year, so you might. Consider that, especially because you have two years for your planning efforts, two and a half years.
Budget, ten percent match?
Yes, that's right, yeah, so that's also a good avenue, and, yeah, it's a, it can be up to thirty thousand for an application. Um, uh, and let's, what else did I wanna?
Thirty thousand dollars to do what?
A a town plan update, so.
Give us thirty thousand dollars.
So, the state, uh, yes, will give, let me back this up, the state will give, uh, if. They, if you apply for the maximum amount, and they grant it to you, then um. You can, yes, you, it would be used towards developing your town plan for either if you go through a consultant or through us. Um, currently, we're um, doing this application with Williamstown and. Orange, and they want us to be the consultant to, so that it would really be paying for us to do it, essentially. Um, but it's, it's quite a process, it's about a year, at least a year process to go through. Um, outreach, there's significant community outreach and survey, um, of course, planning, um. Chapter writing, um, going through.
Plan.
Yes, yeah, we're going through the hearing process, so it's, once you get to the hearing process, informational sessions, that's. Can be up to six months long.
And we, the grant can be used to fund community outreach to get.
Yes.
To figure out how to get input from the people.
Absolutely, yes.
Large format printers, if you want their print maps.
Hey, hey, hey.
Yes.
What, is, so, and so that, that's a cost, we would, we would pay you guys to help us with that as a consultant?
You would only have to match ten percent.
Okay, but we get the grant, which, so it's about a thirty thousand dollar process to do that.
It could be less, but generally, we're looking between twenty twenty-five, and then if you want to do an. Enhanced energy plan, that's, Sam Lash is our energy planner, and she does that. You know, I think it's ranges from four to six thousand. But, um, there's something else I wanted to tell you about. Uh, the town plan, um, just remember, let me, uh, that, uh. With the grant, um. I'm, I'm just lost of what I was gonna say there, because.
It'll come back.
Does anyone go, go in it alone, or does everyone always bring a consultant in?
Uh, towns go it alone, a more town is. Uh, they have, I mean, usually, there's an active volunteer that will write it, um. I think someone who's familiar with the town should be, you know, definitely a part of it, especially for the history side and. Um, but we, oh, this is what I was gonna say, we do all, we can handle, like, getting your data for it if you need. And also the mapping, because the mapping's a pretty extensive part of it as well.
Yeah.
So you're saying more towns going it alone?
Um, well, their, their plan is currently expired, and they're in the process of updating it. Um, but they're also interested in going for an NDA, which is a neighborhood development area in Northmore Town, so. But you need an, an adopted plan to, to go for any state designation program. Or. But I did read in your town plan that they were considering a growth area. Probably at the base of Ellen, which could be the only place I could think of.
Yeah.
Um, and then I've heard of some planning for maybe even multifamily mixed. Or multi uh unit development along the road, um. The, the act, not. Yes, but but on the, the main.
Route seventeen.
Yes.
But, yeah.
But north of that, but probably not on the riverside.
Um, Route seventeen is pretty much a um zone eighty all the way up. Until almost about around or man the road somewhere in that area, and then.
And one day.
It, it just means you're pretty much not building anything there.
Yeah, it's deep to the river.
But from German, uh, sorry, the flats access road, that before you turn off at Sugar, for Ellen. What is that?
German Flats that heads up towards Mount Ellen from Route seventeen?
Yes.
That's German Flats.
Yeah, I think there, that's just what I read in the plan.
And that is, we do have a recreation district there, and it gets, and then if you get closer to Sugar Bush, we start getting into resort development, which. Has a little bit more density and all that stuff that is.
The state close this is school, school would be great place to develop that into low income.
But you're also down, we just start down with rivers, corridors coming out, we're gonna deal with Chase Brook, Slide Brook.
Yes, um, yes.
All that can be an issue.
Okay, so, so also, so part of this consultation, um. We go through like a consultation kind of review, just like, talk about top three or. Three to five priorities with the town plan, um, and, you know, what, what your goals are moving forward. Um, I mean, I've, I've done a review from the twenty twenty plan, but I'm sure there's been other changes since then, so. If, if someone wants to share some of those.
Okay, so, did you read our twenty twenty plan?
I did, I haven't finished the transportation or utilities.
Yeah, it's quite detailed.
Very long.
Yes, it is, well, there.
It's a long time to read.
Yes, but I've read um all through land use natural resources, all of the community and. Houses.
So we're all new, but Jason, you're the.
I, I'm, I've never done a town plan before.
But you're the person who's been here the longest.
I guess so.
So, near as I can tell, aside from making interesting reading. I don't see how it's been used, we did, you know, we wrote, rewrote the land use regulations or changed them, but. I don't know who's using it.
Because they all pieced out.
Pardon?
They took the five-year break afterwards and pieced out.
They, they've left.
They, they updated it in twenty twenty, and then who was remaining went to work. Um, the LURs immediately after, because that's the, the weapon of the town plan, you know, it's the way I use it.
For the tool.
That's the, yeah, it's the nice.
The goal is to help people meet those requirements and get what they want.
It's, it's the surgical part of it, too.
But my understanding is that town plan seems to be very philosophical. Your aspirational goals for what we're trying to do, and. I don't understand, I honestly don't understand who's using it or how it's being used.
So I read it to join the planning commission.
So did I.
And that's, when I come to these meetings, my hope and goal is that we're gonna start to do those things and stop fighting over grammar. So that's kind of what we're supposed to be doing here, but we're not being very effective.
Well, you guys were um making some updates to LURs or proposed updates to LURs. I referenced it to sections of the town plan, make sure that you're reading what was. There could, but then again, you have housing, then you've got environment, and it could get contradictory, and it just does, but it has to agree with some. Whatever regulation have your land use regulations has to coincide with some of the goals and objectives of town plan.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
And I've asked Brian to. Um, the maps.
I told him to take his time, because.
For us, um.
Which maps?
Of the town, and I want to do old fashioned overlays.
Oh, no, my one.
Yeah, my one, um, but he's gonna do a map of each district. And then he's gonna do a digital map that we can toggle them on and off so that we can all look at it.
Great, yes.
Um, because I don't think, to me, it makes sense for us to see a map that is representative. Of an area. And then look at the town plan as we see that, so that we have a clear understanding. And if nobody else wants to do that, that's what I'm doing, um, uh.
Yeah, he's, I, he's, I was very busy, and we're also developing the future land stuff, but he's, he's aware.
We're very important.
Well, it needs, he lives down, that's right, so.
Um, so anyway, I thought that was a place to start, and then you could look at how watersheds come together and.
Mm-hmm.
All of that, and if we looked at the tool. That showed where housing can be developed with our current land use regs. Knowing what some of the damage that we've incurred with some of the flooding might inform us as we go forward. Is what I was thinking.
That makes sense.
Can you remind me when the next regional plan is gonna be, because we, we just amended to adopt a.
That's right.
Rework version of the old one, right?
Yes, we are working on it now, um, it's. It's getting closer to the end, we're now, it, we're working on the housing chapter, so. Watching this is very good, um, but yes, we have um a methodology that's being, that's. Being proposed to the regional plan committee, and we're working out the details, but it's going to be. Released to all municipalities soon, and it is aspirational, because there's, I mean, no requirement that we can say. Oh, you must build twenty houses, you know, in five years. Um, but yes, that is, uh, we, are you familiar with the regional plan, and that's. It's, yes, it's in the process being updated as well every eight years, and. But of course, this year is a little trickier because of the future land use map requirement now. So we are aligning the future land use map with the housing targets that the, that BH, um. Uh, FA actually released with um, the Department of Housing and Community Development, so. Yes, it's been a, it's a busy regional year, and uh, have you been, you have a board meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, I just couldn't remember, because think about our time, we have to base a lot of our town plan on that.
Yes, well, um, Cabot, um, has, they are, they should have adopted it at town meeting day. But they um used our, when we re-adopted it, they used the language from that for the housing targets, just. Because we hadn't finalized the actual methodology, so, so there's ways, I mean, and you have. A few years, so we should have it hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's probably a silly question, but when we think about affordable housing, which is what. You're looking at. When we put that in a rural area. I know, this is probably seven years ago, it added six thousand dollars to the cost. Per family that they needed to earn because of transportation. I'm sure that's considerably more now, does it not make sense? To make sure that those are as close to a town center as possible?
Yes, and that is part of um our goal and emphasis in the housing targets are to concentrate them. In the main centers of Montpelier Berry, Waterbury, um, and Berlin, Berlin's a big growth center as well. So, I mean, Bston won't have.
It doesn't seem a sensible thing.
No.
Uh, or even a doable thing realistically.
Yes, I think if anything, it would come from the resort side of, of building, because that's where it has been.
Yeah, I mean, affordable housing is very difficult, because there's a huge gap between getting out of affordable housing into regular housing. Sort of, I, I consider it sort of a trap. Being affordable.
Well, it's, it's a challenge, and it's a, it's a big um problem, because it's not very affordable yet. Um, Plainfield's, I'm sure, if you haven't seen in the news, they are working on a village expansion project, and. At least thirty percent, they're hoping to be affordable, and they're working with Downstreet. And to uh build those homes, um, while planning for it, um. Yeah, so it, there's, yeah, there's a lot to consider, um, affordable housing. Also, in your plan, going back to the town. Also, in your plan, going back to the town plan, there was a consideration for dual. It's dual goal, dual conservation um projects. What is the exact terminology? Consider dual goal conservation projects to create affordable house sites in conjunction with preservation of open space, farmland and natural resources. So this is kind of.
Probably utilizing P V Ds or something like.
Well, conservation easements, but also through um Vermont Housing Conservation Board, they actually provide funding if you apply. Um, for like farmlands or want to conserve some bit for like an affordable housing unit. On a very small scale, very.
Kind of affected that, like most of our larger farms would that would have a good chunk of that property in current use, would that have a negative effect on? That property owner and his current use, even though he's trying to put affordable housing in.
Of course. Well, I it's, I actually, I brought some literature on that as well, but it's, I don't know a huge amount about it, but I could find out. But it is part of um. Vermont Housing and Conservation Board to provide these incentives for for small towns that actually want some form of housing on their land. Um, but it is to promote affordable housing.
And whose land? That's the question, right? Is it the town's land or is it land of our that private citizens?
It can, yeah, a farm owner, I I think it can be. Uh, a mix, but I'd have to double check that, I don't wanna tell you anything that.
You know, the big red barn that goes across the one hundred on the right side of it, there's a white house on the left, and they separate those two by those developers? I thought they were trying to be some sort of housing.
The Shea Brothers.
The Shea Brothers, I know very little about it.
Um, yeah, but on town land. Down right by the bridge on Tremly Road is where.
Okay.
They were looking at that.
I mean, the in the town plan, it talks about, I mean, the waste field wastewater program system, like when that comes online, being able to. If we can create a place to build this housing, they can then utilize that wastewater.
Right, but then you look at the corridor situation and that, that's a whole new wrinkle, right? Cause that's all in the floodland, flood plain, and in the corridor.
I did, it's it's there's no easy answer to any of it. But I mean, you know, water, water and sewer is a huge part of the development, and if you wanna have. If you want to develop things so close together, you know, you're, that's, that's a big issue.
And isn't there some law that's coming forth about development along rivers?
Yes, there's, I think there's another, um, currently. Yeah, well, the, yeah, are you, are you not talking about the flood safety act? But this starts in twenty twenty, right? But um, yes, so that I don't have a lot of information on that yet, but it is um. Developing in floodplain and river corridors um will require require a new permit. So that will be through the Department of Environmental Conservation, so they're gonna be putting a lot of restrictions. And and then also the, the new elevation requirement through um floodplain. Um, regulations, uh at least two feet above base. Flood elevation is how you how you have to build now. So yeah, this is another little cheat sheet, um, what town officials need to know and need to do. I am, yes, and I made it two copies, just I didn't wanna overwhelm you with like.
I mean, the river corridor part's gonna be an interesting thing going forward, because we we. Do all, all, you know, we do honor stream buffers and button buffers and all that, but there's gonna be a little. Little bit more to it, starting, they gotta have the new mapping by twenty twenty seven, and then that has to go into effect. The as far as the female flood zones, we can't know, there's it's almost. Even with our L U Rs and it's.
Well, when you look at building to some of these, they're ugly. And it's the entrance to our towns.
Which buildings are actually? Have you seen the one in Moretown?
So what are the, what should be our marching orders heading into this? Like, what should we be, what should our pet projects be so we can come? And be more prepared, cause it seems like it's a lot of heavy lifting for us, and then a consultant that's gonna sort of guide us through the path, but. You know, and a lot of the polling and information from the community is gonna come from paying for surveys, but also by just talking to people in town. But, you know, it's a big town plan, like, so what what should we be really working on? Like, what should be in the back of our mind? I think that might be a difficult question.
Well, I guess, well, so this is a good question then to ask, the like your main priorities, I I. I'm hearing a lot of housing. Discussion, um, so I would. With, so the regional plan, we are performing a survey, and I'm actually going out and tabling events at the libraries. Just to hear from the public what they think of. The housing and land use and what this regional map means to them and. Where the priorities are, and the reason we're doing that, well, is because we usually, when you put out a survey, not everyone's gonna do it. And only a select few are interested, so by getting out to the rural communities as well, we can hopefully gather more feedback and it's. A a useful tool for us to be able to plan, um, and you know, moving forward, so. Um, I think that community engagement, starting as early as possible, is key. And you're so early in, which is great, that you have the time to do that and the capacity, it seems like.
Is there a formula of the questions that we should be asking to elicit the feedback?
Yeah, that's a good question, because I'm developing that with Brian right now. We'll share it, um, we should be, we're hoping to have it finished by Thursday, so, cause I'm trying to plan these. Tabling events in April, um, so it's, but it, there's thirteen libraries in our region, so. Got a lot to get through, but it's, yeah, so I would say, how's, uh, sorry, outreach and. From reading your plan, natural resources seems to be conservation is is primary, you have large core forests here. Valuable timber, um, you know, this seems to be another priority, so your natural resource. Section looked great, aspirational, but if you want to revisit that and see what makes sense and what is logical. To achieve in the next three to five years.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is someone spent a heck of a lot of time writing that.
Carol Cook, Carol Chamberlain and Pauline McMurtry were the lead people on that.
I have no idea how many man hours went in or woman hours went into that document, it had to be thousands. And I'm just thinking to myself, wow. I mean, what has that document done?
Can't have land use regs if you don't have a town plan.
We have to redo it every eight years.
It's, it's, you know, look at it and say, hey, look, this looks great, yada, 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 sign off on it. Because, I mean, I would love to, you know, if we really wanted to get into the. Philosophical aspiration for what our town wants to look like and everything like that, that's a lot of work. And I'm just thinking to myself. Because if we're gonna use it, but I haven't heard anything. Yet, that tells me it's gonna change one thing. I I what, I'm sorry, I'm I'm on my post now, yeah, but what I see is a tick, is a tick the box. Thing that we're gonna have to pay money, it's gonna go to some repository, it's great reading, I I mean, I mean, we can just. Spend a minimal amount of time updating it just to make sure it says twenty twenty eight written on it. Because, or, because I'm concerned, I don't see how it's being used, I don't see how it's being used by the state. I just see money changing hands if we have to update it, you know, printers and what have you.
I think you're right.
It's, it's, I mean, small town government is what we have to do.
Well, well, okay.
Do we have to reinvent the wheel?
No, we just, we're just gonna amend the time, I mean, we're just.
But I think we don't have a deep understanding of each of these areas, do you? I mean, I've lived here for how long and I don't.
I I read what I wanna read in it.
Yeah, but do you know where those areas are and what the relevance is?
No, but I I I've read it, and I need to read it multiple times to understand it, but I'm. Thinking to myself, you know, I've only got a limited amount of life left in me. How I spend my time.
Saying though, it's like, I don't think that we necessarily have to. Erase everything and then rewrite, I think a lot of the stuff that's in our town plan is gonna be very applicable going forward, I mean, it's. But we, I think, but I also say, some of it we may be able to reduce, especially when we look at. Uh, one section may have forty fifty goals and objectives.
Objectives, recommendations, I have no, where I used to work, there was a stewardship. Every regular stewardship and you or your successor would be following through on those goals and recommendations and implementing that. And I don't see that happening here, me or my successor, I should have said. Um, I don't know who's stewarding them, I don't know where they went.
It's supposed to be us. But that's what the problem has been, is because then people put all that work in and then they go. And then the next people come in and they are clueless.
Here, here's an example, people love living here because their cell phones don't work. Until they really want their cellphone to work, right? So if you read in the town plan, it lists one of Facestown's economic weaknesses, a lack of cellphone coverage, right? So if I sit here and I say, I think in the town plan, we should try to get ninety five percent coverage for cellphones in the town of Facestown, right? We should start putting cellphone towers in, which is a, which is a money making law, if you put a cellphone down on your property. You're gonna bring in twenty thousand dollars a month in cellphone rent, and that's gonna go directly in your pocket, right? So that's good for you. But, you know, when they tried to put one in Warren, it was all over the Valley Reporter, there's a few inside of me here is talking about it. So like, we put out a survey, do you want more cellphone towers? Some people respond, some people don't, we then put in our town plan. That we wanna put more cellphone towers, select what presents it, we warn it to the public, it's in the town plan. It gets approved, now, we as a planning commission, work on getting people to build cellphone towers in our town, because that's what the people want. We need to know what the people want.
Incentivize that, because we can't, we can't say, hey, you need to build cell phones, you gotta incentivize it, or reduce permitting fees, cause we need to.
But people, I mean.
All P M C stuff, anyway.
If you've ever talked to Chris Austin, he got a cellphone tower put up, and he lives just across the river, right? And he'll tell you all about how much money he gets from every single cellphone person, right? There's no, you know, there's no cellphone service to your house.
I know.
And you love it, no, but but you love it, right? You don't want cellphone service. Right? So, but it's important for us to understand, do people want cellphone towers? Do you want, do they want cellphone service on their property? And that's what the town plan gives us. Because we we make a plan, people are supposed to read it, if they don't, we can't do that, we can't make people look into it. And then we use that document to shape our U Rs. And this is what for five people in a room decided was important, and then the public had their opportunity to comment on it, and this is what was enacted. So do you wanna be a part of the new one that makes the next plan for Facestown? Is that work you're willing to do?
If we, if we're able to make a difference, but I got, I can push rocks upstream. In the creek, that'll probably make me feel better than just. Rework, you know, work on a two hundred page document and nobody reads and nobody follows.
Dude, if your heart's not in it, your heart's not in it, so.
There's gonna be some new sections in the town plan that we have to add, can you?
There's a new planning goal, um, environmental justice, so that is, um. Yes, that's where community outreach, surveys, and uh, yes, working with your whole. Community, you know, what you're saying with with survey and seeing what other people think, and that is part of that goal, so that. That is, um, in terms of other chapters.
I've heard that too.
Yeah, well, there's, like, Act one eighty one has added more language, you know about forest integrity, um. Housing element, you have to use year round and seasonal dwelling data, um. Includes specific actions to address housing needs, I I'll I'll give you this, but and it shows, you know. You have to show specifically low income and persons with moderate income and account for permitted residential development as well. So these are just items that have to, yeah, incorporated, so. It's, I don't think it's a huge lift because your town plan is so thorough, but it's updating, you know, a a lot can happen in eight years. And especially with the legislative changes, um. Blood resilience plan, um, the strategy shall include adoption and implementation of state flood hazard area standards. That's a new one as well. Yeah, so that the housing goal, I I don't really think it's gonna pertain to Facestown as much, because it's it's. Saying these areas should be planned to accommodate a substantial majority of housing needed to reach the housing targets. Developed for each region, so, um, and that happens in downtown centers, village centers, planned growth areas, um. It sounds like most of, if any growth is happening, it's happening closer to Wakefield or Irisville, is that right? So.
Anywhere where the water wastewater system would be in play, increase the the density, the possible.
Yes, and uh East Montpelier is, um, there, they have some ideas for shared. Community wastewater facilities that they're kind of working their way around right now, so. Um, and I think that's it for, I mean, there's some small changes, but nothing. Um, it's mainly in housing, that's your significant change in statute. And just. Having more detailed data for that, which we can help, you know, we're working on that anyway, so.
And the, um, we keep talking, the state designations, the village center and all that, do we, I I'm I'm not sure. Are we eventually gonna have to change the name of our zoning districts to match that?
Yeah, that's a good question, so currently. They, yes, the land use categories are still, have you seen them? Yeah, so like enterprise is now, um, uh, recreation based areas. Resort and recreation based areas, so that's. Yeah, so but it's.
So they're just trying to make the whole state have the same, or. Easier for mapping.
Yeah, it's, I mean, they're, it's, they're putting it on the region now, that's what they're doing, um. But yeah, so I think a land use map conversation with the planning commission will be our next step as well, as we move forward this spring. Um, so and Brian should have a map that we can all look at and.
And he's working, I have that communication with him.
Oh, yes.
With overlays.
Yes, yeah, well, they can't do that anymore, they don't have the right. I know, but that clear mylar, it was the bomb.
Oh, yes, it's expensive, though. Well, yes, so, um, let me just remember not, I don't wanna forget anything here. I I feel like I've given you a lot of information already, but if you have specific questions, please.
It sounds like our our marching orders going forward is we need to figure out what's important to us, what's important to town. And sort of put that in our back pocket, so when we sit down and start to develop the plan and, that's, I think that's really what we need to do.
Yeah, and you can reach out at any time and and some towns find that if you do chapter by chapter. It's easier, cause then you're not overwhelmed with seven chapters or.
I mean, more than half of it is the town history, which we're really not gonna change. And then it's, I mean, and then it talks about stuff, and then we have action items, we just have to basically rewrite our action items to put the stuff we've already done in the other side.
And updating like your implementation activity, hazard mitigation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, let me put these together for you. It's, it is a a lot to, I I see where your concern is of what, what's the point?
I I got, I yeah, got very frustrated. Though, cause I always say, planning commission isn't there. Most of my job is as a Z A is. And then, of course, I had a P C that was commenting, oh, and so, I mean, they would have meetings and they'd start going over. Listen, jackups and and three more people would quit, you know, nothing ever happened.
So do you have like a standard surveying that the towns can use? To start this process, or does the surveys have to be? Started from scratch?
No, I, I could share Eastmont Pillar has a survey, right? It's specifically around housing.
I wonder if we can reuse parts of our.
Carol has it, she's willing to share, I just.
Be interesting to see. With the same survey.
If you want some same questions.
We can just see what has changed, that people change.
Um, I grew up in West Virginia. In a small town, so kind of familiar. But we don't have Act two fifty, so a little bit different. Um, yeah. Um, okay, so I'm gonna be. Yes, yeah, if there's anything else. I think it, spend a little bit of time just looking through this, because there is a lot of information and this is just some of it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can get lost in all this detail. You know?
Yes.
And I think we have to have the big picture in mind. Who's our customer and how are we gonna use this? Otherwise, we can just get.
In details that then don't mean anything.
Yeah. And as length says, you know, we said argue about.
Thank you.
I don't wanna do that.
Can I, can I offer a comment from the?
Oh, yeah, can you share, John? Could you?
Hold on, we can't see. We're still in Hawaii.
Yeah. Awesome, alright.
I've been wanting to see.
Just drag, can you drag it across? Drag the zoom screen.
I would just, I would support the, the idea of. Reducing the level of detail rather than increasing or changing. It seems like, I'm, I'm flipping through the, um. The town plan right now, as you guys are talking, um, and. It seems like it would benefit from a, a distillation. Uh, it seems like there's a lot of, a lot of words, a lot of good intent, um. But it seems like there is a lot of kind of like duplicated sentiments and like duplicated ideas, um. You know, you, I. As with rewriting the plan, even just distilling this is gonna be a ton of work, but you could probably knock like thirty pages off. Just by, you know, combining a couple bullet points here and there, reducing the word count of how things are described, um. Making it a little bit more of an index that's easy to access when you do need to make a decision, um. Just, you know, user friendly, I think is, is a. A good way to go when you're trying to streamline things, so.
More direct.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree. I agree with Michael's point too, like who's, who's actually using this? If you're going to build a home, you're not looking at the town plan. The others. Well, maybe, no, but.
No, but, but it's the, um, the state law. It's like the down in Granville and those places, they don't have a town plan, they don't.
And we also, uh, there seems like a lot of redundancy too. We have Central Mountain Regional Planning, Matter River Valley Planning, Matter River Valley Recreation District.
And the town pays to all of them.
Yeah, but they pay a lot more to M R V P D. I'm curious about that. I, is Paul here tonight, or?
Uh, he texted, he's, he's spaced. But, let's go, um, let's go minutes and then we can chat more and other business.
Sounds good.
Sound good? Michael, you have a comment about?
Andrew, sorry, did we make a conclusion out of this? I mean, we, we got a bit of an education. Did we get an action item? Did we decide to do?
You should try to figure out what's important to you. That our, our marching notices are like, what do your constituents want the town to look like? What do you want the town to look like?
But until we get our maps and everything, does it make sense that we start going through this chapter by chapter? And discuss it and then look at the land use regs and how it relates to it, so that we have a real clue?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's just an idea. Your vice chair.
I think we need to start as soon as we can, um. Like, I don't know what that looks like if, if we come up with action items now, or?
Well, I mean. Housing is an issue. Everyone talks about housing, right? So like, how do we make it better, like?
I, I don't know that in Facetown we can.
Yeah. You can, we can read chapters and then we can talk about the associated L U Rs that have an effect on those. And if we see, need some changes, like I wanna talk about four dot three tonight, which we're gonna talk about. Because I think people should be able to, and we'll talk about that at late, I think, but that's to a line of the town plan, you know?
I think we need to get the survey started and get people to tell us what they want. Otherwise, it's just the five of us and we all have different opinions, I'm sure. But, um, we probably got, have to get the survey started. And if these overlay maps are part of that, I, I, I just need to see these. I'd, I'd love to see all these, but.
Bigger.
They're gonna be like water.
Yeah.
Well, I listen, one of the tools like for the, the zone and district one, one of the best maps that I use. The one with the blue and the yellow and all that is I go and use the listers map.
Yeah.
And then I can have everything and I can blow it up and see how, uh, a district may actually split a parcel, um. And then all the other ones, I, working all these other maps, I usually get a pretty good sense of things, either using A and R Atlas. Or the interactive map viewer, because it has all those, I can toggle them on and off. And I can see what I, and I can, I can go down to the parcel. Um, and see what I'm looking at. It's a great tool, great tool.
So. Are you saying we have these maps?
What I'm saying is, if you go on the A and R Atlas or the interactive map viewer, you'll see it, or the listers map. Uh, yeah, I mean, I've seen a paper copy of, you see, you've seen them up in my office on the walls, um. I've got a couple of PDF versions, um.
It's way better on a computer, with a screen in front of me to look at these. I mean, I look at these maps all the time.
No, up that bit.
No, that, that's good too, but like, you know, when I'm sitting in my, I mean, I have a twenty-four inch monitor, I have my laptop up too, and I can look at the maps and see how everything correlates. I mean, it's, it's great. I mean, printing them out would also be great.
I'm old, I like paper.
I, and I, and I respect that about you.
But he's creating the digital.
Expecting your elders.
He's talking about Brian's, creating a digital thing for it, which is basically, is basically the same thing.
He will be able to project it up here, so we can actually.
Yeah.
To your point, Freddie, yes, I think we should put on the agenda. I mean, I'm not a chair or vice chair, but I think we should put on the agenda that we'd like to talk about this chapter of the town plan. In a meeting and then talk about some of the L U Rs that are associated with that to start familiarizing ourselves with the town plan as a group. And the L U Rs as a group. I think that's a great idea.
I think we should plan the survey.
Yeah.
That was done.
I'll work on that with Carol.
I think if you find out that survey, an historical survey, find out those questions off. I think we should read our, our, our document, read the survey and see like what's missing. And then, I think getting input. From a constituent.
Very.
Is very important.
And what's the best way to get the most bang for our buck? Like, we, like, she said, we all talk about the surveys now. Nobody, nobody responds to these surveys, same, same ten people reply to all the surveys, right?
Yeah.
How do we get more involved? It's something to think about. Is there, what can we do? To get more involved, to get the answers from more people. What, what are ways, what, what outreach can we do to, to do that?
Because the problem is if you leave open paragraph questions, it's really hard to disseminate that data. So you have to have specific questions, but then if there's too many.
Leads people a certain direction.
Yeah, but also like, I mean, we all did the wellness survey, you know, it was.
I, I pieced out on that.
Okay, thank you for saying that again, but Freddie couldn't finish it. You know, I finished it, it was slightly painful, but that's what Sam does his reports for. No, you want the data. Both, well, we want, yeah, we want the questions, we want.
Questions, so we know what they asked to get there.
Ten four, I think that's.
And also ask the same questions again, so we could see how the viewpoint of people may have changed in the past. For eight years, whatever.
Because people tell you there's problems with housing in this valley, but they can't tell you how to fix it.
Well, I don't know how to fix it. I don't understand when affordable houses.
There's a difference between affordable housing and a house you can afford.
Okay, what is affordable housing?
Affordable, affordable housing can, is.
Two and a half times the property level.
Yeah, so you, the minimum, you, you have to make at least forty thousand. Like, these numbers are pretty good, not perfect. You have to make a minimum of forty thousand dollars a year. But you can't make more than eighty thousand dollars a year to live in affordable housing in this valley. So if you don't make enough money, you can't live there. If you make too much money, you can't live there, to be in real affordable housing, and there's incentives and other things.
So how do you take? A house and make it affordable? We got taxes, who's gonna pay the taxes? Who's gonna pay the utilities?
Well, this, the ones he's talking about are either nonprofits or state.
Yeah.
Programs.
Like the one on the access route to Sugar Bush, that's section eight, affordable housing, which has its own stipulations. And if you make more than a certain amount of money for a period of twenty-four months, the landlord can either raise the rent or kick you out. So when I talk about affordable housing to be attractive, if you can't make enough money to get a down payment to buy a house in this valley. While you're living there, because you can't make that much money. There's stock.
But that type of affordable housing is not gonna be a huge issue for.
It's not, it's not.
There's this other type that is just housing that people can afford.
And the problem is, it all comes down to short term rentals. And, and you're gonna get a lot of people that say that, that short term rentals are the problem. Because they, people come in and, and large corporations buy houses and then immediately put them on the rental market.
It's the business model that has been created from it as opposed to, you know, Suzie and John renting out their. You know, extra bedroom to help pay their taxes.
Yeah, and I have some really strong opinions and plans on how to help that process, but they're not very popular with. I mean, they're probably popular in this room, but they might not be popular with everyone.
So, yeah, short term rental are probably gonna be.
It's a huge issue.
An issue for the town plan. Why don't we wrap up the, um, Nikki's stuff with saying we're gonna get the survey?
Yeah.
Get the data from the survey and everybody's gonna review it for the next meeting.
Yeah. That'd be very helpful, then we can start looking at how the plan fits in and talk about like.
Are you texting or?
And just, just to confirm, our next meeting is on April fourteenth, the second Monday.
Correct, and also be a reorganizational meeting.
Re-organizational.
It'd be the first meeting af- after the first select board meeting, after town meeting day, you reorganize, you go over.
Oh, yeah, we.
Procedures, chair, vice chair, all that good stuff.
And that's Rogers Meeting Rules. I need to read that.
Roberts.
Roberts, sorry, Roberts. I'm, I didn't read it. Matty told me to read it, I didn't read it.
Yeah.
And what happened in the meeting, it's not a good.
Yeah, dude, I mean, we're on record.
Alright, let's keep rolling. Um, approval of February tenth, twenty twenty-five. Minutes.
Jason did a great job with the minutes, I just wanna say that.
Thanks, Matt.
So.
So do we wanna, do we wanna do Roberts rules and get a motion to approve?
I motion to approve the minutes in the last meeting.
On second.
All in favor?
Hold on, we'll get talking about it.
So then you can talk about it. You have to have a second before you talk about it.
Oh, then we do that. Gotcha, okay, so we have a second. Michael, do you have a discussion?
I don't understand what happened.
What happened? Where are you at?
I thought we had a very long discussion. When I thought we had come to some agreements, and I've got my notes here. Saying that we had some agreements. And I don't see them in the minute.
Let's start, what agreements do we have? Let's start with one.
So there was, I thought we had agreed to some punctuation in nine point four B.
Commas. Okay, what does that have to do with the minutes here, though?
Should we talk about it or not?
Mike, I found this on page two, which I hadn't seen before. Where Jason's gonna clarify and bring that back to us.
Number seven, other business.
And omission was noticed in the proposed revision of section nine point four, Jason will correct and the piece we go and we'll. Vote on this subject at a future meeting.
Would you want more detail there?
Okay, so basically. I'm, I'm a little frustrated. Because I'm not used to having conversations without concrete. Physical conclusions. This tells me all approved. That's what it says.
Let's go to a specific thing and point something out and let's see if there's something wrong with it. Cause you're sitting here, you're criticizing my work, but you're really not saying a goddamn thing.
I went into the minutes, and I went on website. Jason, I'm not criticizing.
You, I mean, you're going after commas that don't need to be in cop there, because they don't really need to be there. It, it, it's, it's, it's really a pain, it really is. It's been a fourteen hour day and I'm getting criticized about where a comma is and something that really didn't even need a comma. So if you have something that's wrong with the minutes, specifically point it out, let's review it. If it's wrong, we'll change it.
I gotta say, I agree with Michael. I feel like not the commas, those weren't, I'm not grammatically very efficient. But we were presented that as being verbatim what the state has. And there was a compilation of two documents there, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that changes what we were told. And I think that by not seeing the official document and, and not having it, um. Full transparency, that it didn't feel right.
Well, you saw the full document, you saw, I mean.
But we didn't know.
Last month was the second month you saw it.
Freddie, we, we. I brought, we brought the document, we reviewed the document, we voted on the document, and then Jason put a copy of the document in the minutes. Right? And then the issue was, Michael brought up the commas. On the minutes about something that we already talked about? And that wasn't really the place to talk about it.
Well, he, he had to raise it somewhere, but the point is that there was, we were told it was verbatim what we were passing.
Yeah.
Just like what the state has. And in truth, it was a compilation of another document in a very small section.
No, 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 what I put in that document was from the state. The document that Michael sort of was a different document, which I did not use in any way to create. I just, I just changed the L U Rs to, to do R V S, that's it. And then we, there was the owner builder exemption, which I copied directly from. The state of Vermont website, and then we talked about it two meetings ago and approved it.
Yes.
And those, those revisions are gonna go to the select board and the public. Then, and we're gonna review them again, and then they're gonna be added to the L U Rs. There's three more steps associated.
I'm gonna have to stay from approving minutes, because I don't understand the process. You've asked these specific.
I'm just asking you, in, in this, this one right here, what's wrong with these minutes?
No, he's talking about the minutes in front of you, not those minutes. What's wrong with the minutes that he wrote for this week? That he wants you to tell. What?
It says we all approved, then I look, then I go and I look at the minutes.
What do you mean all approved?
It says, it says number three, Freddy motion to approve the one thirteen twenty-five minutes.
Freddy, yeah, then we approved the minutes from.
It actually says the October, January minutes. What's? If you look at number three, approval of the October, January thirteen.
Listen, I, I can't spend another meeting talking about minutes, it's gonna drive.
One thirteen is January thirteenth.
Word about it.
Oh shit.
Yeah, okay. So, can we just get rid of October and then there's nothing wrong with the minutes?
Well, you have a problem with numbers seven?
As I'm saying, I'm not gonna.
No, 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 here's why, no, I don't, I don't, I'm not yelling, I'm just raising my voice, because I just remembered something. The reason why the nine point four, because the minutes. To Ja- January thirteenth, the minutes themselves are fine. You wanna change a revision to a revision. And that's why that was in section seven about that. Because the minutes themselves are fine.
Yes, you're going to change nine point four and bring it back to us in the future.
The minutes from January thirteenth were fine.
Yeah.
It's with, and all the stuff that you were, um. Pointing out was actually in the document of the nine point four stuff, which isn't actually the minutes.
It's the document that you're going to bring back.
Right.
Michael, do, do you see that?
Yeah, and, and I'm willing to move on.
Alright.
Let's move on, I have Stan.
Okay.
I said it, she seconded, what's the next step in the rules?
Now call the book.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Hi, Michael stands.
Hi, Michael stands.
You make it fast.
I mean, the other option is we can. Totally plant, not approve the minutes.
Move on.
And table on.
I think we find voters, but the same, we could have.
Do you feel comfortable with the minutes?
Yeah.
I feel comfortable with minutes.
Okay.
That, that is exactly, though, why the minutes themselves didn't have to make changes to. There was section B and section I, 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 one of them you wanted commas, and then there was another one, I have to go back to my notes. First section was I, and you wanted, there were commas in there, but then I, I, there was something else, there was actually no mission. So, but that's not the actual minutes, that's.
No, that's the document.
That was the document that we actually approved.
So when you bring that back to us.
It'll be done.
But would you also bring us what the state has? So that we can do that comparison?
I can print that out. It, I was the one originating.
Or do a digital.
You just wanna, you just wanna see where I got the permission. That's fine. I can print out the reg. And you can bring that to you. Is that okay with you, Jason?
Yes, I just tell him, I mean, I could print it off here, I mean.
It's literally the R B, what's the?
You're looking for the actual handbook.
Dot sixty-three. You go to the Vermont State Codes.
Yeah.
It talks about the owner builder.
The, the handbook.
Where he directly dictates the, I, yeah, the quote I don't have in my head right now.
Yeah.
I think, Michael, the other thing is, if. You have adjustments to the minutes, it would be helpful to bring in a typed up version of the minutes. That you want, or how you want it. And we can just approve that.
And I have my notes. And then I went, I looked online. And that's what I saw.
Okay, I'm just saying, if you have like concrete change you want typed up or.
I did.
Presented in there.
Yes.
We can just approve that as well.
It's all handwritten.
I don't, I don't worry, I mean, is it like?
That is the changes, this, this document is the one that was sorted on the face and.
Or we get able to do it for next year.
And this is the one.
And I think as we do.
Changes.
As.
And they're different. No one else. About this. And as long as I'm held accountable. I'm willing to just.
But you, you see what I'm saying, like. If you had a problem with section seven, just bring a different typed up section seven and we could insert it and through it.
Yes.
And we also have these meetings recorded.
Yes, that's why I'd like to be known, notice I have seen from the review minutes. Because I seem to be causing angst.
Alright. We don't have Paul's report from. The matter of valid planning district. Uh, so we'll skip to mine. Central Vermont Regional Planning. Uh, if you go on their website, it is linked in here. You can see a presentation on ADUs with. With Central Vermont Regional Planning. Spent fifteen thousand dollars on design work for a bunch of examples. Intended to facilitate. Building of ADUs.
Really?
So there's a bunch of ideas, um.
Other, other websites.
The A D U presentation from February eleventh?
I think there's, is there six, five or six projects you can scroll through and. They give design ideas and rough costs.
Nice. Wow, this is amazing.
Somewhat interesting, and then. The chapter for the regional plan that we discussed was the energy plan. And uh, a bunch of new targets. Um, actually, a lot are lower. In terms of overall energy use. Or, or reduction. Just based on some different data they. They use, so reduction in fossil fuel usage. And I asked a couple of questions in this section along the lines of. Michael, you've been asking in relation to these plans. You know. How much of this is, like, what's the point of all these plans? Does a regional plan have? Any sway or is it all state feder- federal regulations is? You know, there's targets realistic, what happens if we don't hit these targets, are we? Handcuffing ourselves and. To that point, if we don't hit these targets and the state hasn't hit some of these targets, it opens up to lawsuits. Which is uh.
Had a conversation with our representative about that during the meeting day. You know, our state's. Broke. Looking for money. And then we are, I don't understand how the legislature. Allows. To put into statute. That we can be sued. Because that just feeds lawyers and the costs. Okay, to go and argue with each other at hundreds of dollars an hour.
Hmm.
And I don't understand how that's gonna really fix anything. And so we had a long, I had a long discussion with her about that. I mean.
With Candace or Darren?
Darren.
I was there.
Um, and then.
It just seems to me to be kind of productive to try to have a balanced budget and keep our taxes reasonable.
Yep.
You know.
Well, something to think about with our town plan, um. Definitely don't wanna open ourselves up to anything.
Certainly don't want to get down that, go down that road.
In any targets we. Put in place, I think, you mentioned this maybe two meetings ago or last meeting. The targets, are they realistic? Are we tracking them? Is there a point? And I should have asked more about how the regional plan was. You know, what tools are in place for actually achieving these energy targets? Yeah.
These energy targets. You know, we all. I put solar on my house, you know, do some of these things. But China's building a coal plant every week. And I just wonder. What effect the state of Vermont is having.
Well, that's what the, um, you, you were there, were you there on, on town meeting day?
I was at town meeting.
Yeah, and Dara has asked that question, like, what's going on with this clean heat standard? And she, what I got out of her. What she said and what she didn't say. Is that, um. They passed this law last year, this act. And then part of that act was we had to go study its effects. In this group of. Of. I suspect they were experts, I, I don't know their, their backgrounds, but this group came back and said basically. This is not economic. That's what I got out of the conversation. That it's not economic, they're going back to revisit this clean heat standards. To see. How they can encourage. The um, the, the development of. Or the implementation of more clean heat. Without adversely affecting, significantly adversely affecting the economy and costs. Because it's not gonna affect in a material fashion. What's happening in the, in, in, in the glow up. Yeah, that's what I got out of her conversation. And six can get a lot worse.
Yeah.
Because we shut down Yankee, uh, the Duke plant to get power out of the north. And now we got tariffs coming on down for our electricity.
It's gonna hurt. It's gonna be very, very painful up pretty soon.
Yep. So the, the energy plan chapter is also uh. Linked in. From, from the link in the agenda, you'll take a look at that after.
Pretty awesome.
Can you get to there, um, Andrew by cooking?
Hold a meeting agenda on digital, and you click on that link.
The other thing, regional plan related. We talked, talked a little bit with Nikki about it, the. Planning grants. I looked into that a little bit after our last meeting more, um, and like she said, we. Have another uh, round in the fall that I think would probably make more sense. Once we figure out. How much we need and what we want it for and. Ask the select board about it. Yeah, right, look at the select board for the minutes. Yeah, and. That is all I have on the regional plan. Commission. Go. You got Mad Path?
Yeah, I do, I do, but, Andrew, out of this whole little thing. What's the saving point out of this, um, the lawsuits of the, the ability to sue, do they? Are they just acknowledging that they're there, or they're trying to change that?
Well, they adjusted some of the targets, so I, I assume that is to, you know. Reduce the chance of being sued.
They became more aggressive.
They became less aggressive.
Oh, oh, the targets, the targets, okay.
But aside from that, they didn't get into too much of the lawsuits, and it's the Global Climate Act or whatever. Which.
There's two of them, yeah.
Which is what's dictating regional plan.
Hmm.
Mostly, so that's where the changes. Have to be coming from.
Okay. Better, we're back. We're, are gonna have a, a meeting with the public on March twenty-sixth. It's gonna be at six P M at the Wakefield Elementary School. Um, at that meeting, there's to be three. Um, options presented. And for us to go further with some, um. Matching funds, we need to have a certain amount of, we need to see community involvement. And, in this process, and. An acknowledgement of the, or an agreement that wishes the three options we're gonna pursue. And, um, that the community is engaged in that. That's why it's important to get a pretty good showing at this meeting. Um, this could be at this meeting, there's gonna be updated maps. Scoping process will be explained. Uh, there's, there's some design ideas. Uh, and how that be, could pass to be constructed, projected. Timeline. Uh, conversation, cause it's been asked a lot. What activities will be permitted on the path and along the path?
Yeah.
And so Misha's gonna talk about that more, about, um. The different modes of transportation that'll be allowed. Or encouraged. And then we're gonna go to the modest Sam's gonna be there. Um, and some of the path might have to be a hanging path. Cause it's gonna go to the road and it's, the road is kind of. Uh, very, very close that they're to, to, to rock. So it's gonna be, so it's gonna be some hanging path examples, Misha's gonna show, and we have some boardwalk on the path. Which would be some, similar to what's going by Lawson's. Um, Sam's got a conversation about, um, the economic impact of the path. And some data on. Safety, how we're, how the path will improve our safety from reducing biking vehicle collisions. And he's got some walking and riding data. Whether the exhibits. Um, there's also been. There's really questions about what the meeting's gonna be.
Main question is six.
Our choice six, six o'clock, wait till eleven.
Be there at this point.
And I think there's gonna be some food there too.
Awesome.
Buffet sign, yeah.
What time is that?
Six.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's not like meal, but it's.
First stop.
Seems that, yeah. Um, there's also, we've, we've been working on the waste for wastewater project and integrating. The, the path with their.
Correct, so when they're digging.
When they're digging, we're gonna do, we're, we're gonna prepare the path, and what that basically entails is. Um, to get our path, it needs to, it gets some technical funding if it still exists. It needs to be a certain width, I think it's ten or twelve feet. Okay, um.
Huge.
Is that the whole corridor or is that the?
Our path has a right of way of twelve feet.
Yeah.
So the path might be smaller.
The path's gotta be smaller than that.
Yeah, the right away, okay? And the, and the digging of the trenching. For, or, or the work, the right of way for the water wastewater pipe is only six feet, so. There's a little bit of a, we have to expand their scope to allow us to have a path over it. And we're, we're having conversations. Um, with the wastewater project team and. There's some funding transfers that's gonna take place, but for now, it looks like. The path. Which does not exist, a portion of the path that do not yet exist between the Munn Field and Wakefield. Will go over this, um, wastewater. Timeframes planned for constructions twenty, twenty-sixth. And. So it's good.
And right now, you're planning from the Munn Field to where?
Well, the, the, the wastewater will go from the Munn Field to. Uh, it's almost three miles, it's gonna end up near where the, um. The, um, medical center. On, on Old County.
Waste for a much, more waste there.
Yeah, and then I think it's gonna reach a house that goes up Old County, that's in the flood plain or the, but.
Pass the coal fields?
Yeah, I think that's, it's gonna be. Yeah, but that's as far as I think the, 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 the feed is gonna go, and it's gonna go south. Pick up all the houses along Wakefield that are in a flood corridor. Houses that have. I had it written down, um, houses that are, um. Uh, their septic system is within the well. Boundary, you've got segregation, and there's houses right now that have their septic system bleeding into the wells. And so that, no, any of those houses, it's gonna go all the way along under seventeen and then. Through. Through, uh, along one hundred out of the Munn Field. And it's gonna be a combination of trenching, open trenching, as well as horizontal drilling, they're gonna drill, I think underneath the mill brook and stuff. To get under horizontal boring. So. That project's going well and, and I, and, and that the path is, is going well.
Who pays for the maintenance of the pass once it's built?
I don't know. I don't know. I know we've discussed.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I know we've discussed. Um, the different cost of the paths because a, the asphalt path is more expensive to maintain than a gravel path. And, um.
I was thinking like the boardwalks and the, the hanging.
Yeah.
Like that we're gonna.
The hanging things here, I'm, I'm excited to have this meeting on March twenty-sixth to hear more about.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Can ask them these questions too.
Yeah, I think Misha. Yeah, I'm, I'm one, Misha's underling here, so I don't know the answers.
Right, but give them a heads up that it's a question, right?
Yeah, and I, I know we discussed, we've discussed some of those, uh, like. Are we gonna maintain it? Who's gonna pay for it? I just don't know the answer.
Well, the other thing about the asphalt is it retains heat. At a much higher rate.
Yeah.
I was just reading about some city they planted, I forget how many trees. And it lowered their temperature two point five degrees.
Yeah, it doesn't surprise me, I, I. Yeah. Um, but another reason for having a gravel path rather than asphalt path is. Um, additional cost in maintenance. When we have floods on the, um. Misha went on the, uh, little, um, La Moyle Valley Trail.
The red track.
Where the, where the, um, they had asphalt that had some significant problems, that were really expensive to fix. Whereas the gravel was easier to fix.
We need to vote to accept these reports. Oh, I'm sorry, we're just accepting, I guess. Alright, other business, I have one quick one, can I go?
Yeah.
Just. Uh, I think all of us were at town meeting. Um, one thing from the town meeting, I thought. Maybe think about the, uh, the donations the town makes. It's not huge, but twenty-seven thousand. I don't know if we need to think about directing those in our town plan. It seems like one lever we could pull to enforce our vision or.
So which, which twenty-seven thousand?
Uh, it's, it's the one that's under donations in there.
You mean thirty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars in twenty-twenty-five?
No, there's one here on page twenty-five that's big donation.
And it, and it's.
Oh, page twenty, oh, page twenty-five.
It's a bunch of small, it's a bunch of small donations to social services in the valley and. All the great, I mean, I think that's what the town needs to support, but I just.
They're, they're really looking at the.
And that's why I mentioned it too, because I mentioned that they wanted to look more into it, but.
This was select board, I would do it.
Yeah. But. It seems like a. Kind of piece of the. I don't know, piece of the budget that the town plan could impact.
You get seventy-five hundred dollars, oh wow.
And then also, just looking through the budget, you know, there's a lot of, we pay for a lot of planning, kinda to Michael's point.
Yeah, I wanna know what we get for sixty, that was my question. I really wanna know what we're getting for sixty eight thousand three hundred thirty four dollars.
That's Sam's report and this work they do.
Yeah, and I'm not saying they're not doing a job, but it, why are we paying fourteen thousand dollars more in twenty five than in twenty four?
Yeah, their their salaries and their house permanent. I think it's a question of. How can we um get the most out of our money and make sure we use them as as much as we can?
Cause they're not getting a a grant to get a poll to find out what's going on with our constituents, but meanwhile we pay.
But this is the select board's purview, not ours.
No, I know, no, I understand, but we should really lean into them, like, to try to get as much data as we can. Yeah, to get, no, to get data about, so we can.
For our town plan.
For our town plan, cause we're spending a lot of money for that information.
But we don't have to be afraid to ask.
Yeah, um, so we can talk about section four dot three?
Sure.
Alright, so here's what's gonna happen. Jason's gonna put this out in a warning. Okay, so like cell phone towers, this might be contentious issue, so before we put it in the warning. I'd like to just go over it, punctuation, what you feel about it, so we can get an actual document which we're gonna warn.
This is the the item that he brought up last week about the campers and all that.
Every meeting we warn, and if you.
So I thought you meant to warn this as a separate item.
So this will be added to our agenda for our next meeting, but in the process will be warned out and. This regulation said you couldn't plug anything in for a long time. Carol says that's not what it's supposed to be. I think she wrote the reg. But like everything else in her L U Rs, there's a reason why everything exists, and so my. You know, my project here is trying to change it so you can hook up to electric and water. But I want it through a separable connection, so like you'd have to plug in, you know, if you pull into like a campground, basically making a mini camper in your house. You plug your camper in and you hook a hose up rather than running hard wiring. And then as far as the septic stuff. That's a really big deal, so you can't hook directly into septic system unless subpart D, you can read it, I gave you guys all the.
So why do you not want people, like for instance, just up the road here, these people, now there's a trailer there. Um, that people live in full time, but somebody had. They cleared a little tiny site and they used to put in a septic. And water and power, and they used to bring their big camper in every summer.
Where is it?
Just up the road here, and they used to plug in and stay summer there.
Yeah.
Why can't we do that? Why couldn't someone do that?
I I don't know, I'm trying to make it so they can.
Oh, I thought you didn't want them.
I make it so they can.
I thought you didn't want them to be able to plug into a septic.
You can't plug into a septic because that requires a water wastewater permit and how you, so you can hook to a septic as long as. It's in any sewage generated by a camper or other temporary shelter, it shall be disposed of in accordance with applicable low local state and federal regulations.
So.
You just don't want people just dumping it in the Shepherd River.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. Um.
Which I think it already says you have to meet number D, right?
Yes.
Any sewage generating uh shall be disposed of in accordance with all applicable local state.
So they could plug into someone's septic tank if there's capacity?
If, if you have.
State has, uh, if it's like four bedroom wastewater permit or there's only a couple bedrooms?
Nope. It's a health officer, that's really the health officer question, like, cause it comes down to to Jason is.
At that point you need a permit.
You need, you need a permit.
You need a permit. Cause like they want to like.
And I think it should say this, you need a permit for this part.
Well, that's what.
Well, there's there's another part that talks about um. You can't discriminate on the type of housing type people have. It's in there, I can't remember, I'll top my head, that falls into that, but you gotta make it a housing type in order, make it a permit, you know. Some trailer residence, but a trailer or a camper can be.
A permanent.
That's that's a single family residence. Same thing as a mobile home. Can't discriminate on the housing type.
So like, in one scenario, you have keep people come, maybe they're horse people and they have a beautiful RV, they park in your driveway. You can run a hose out to them, you can run a nice extension cord out, plug them in. How you deal with their their septic, you just, as long as you play by the rules, you're straight, no problems. That's what I'd like you to be able to do this summer. Right now, when they pull in, they won't have electricity, they have to run their generator or go off solar batteries. And how they fill their water tank, I mean, right now, Maddie, our town clerk, she has a beautiful RV, but she can't. Roll up to her house and charge it the night before and fill up with water, because you can't break the L U Rs. And that's, you know. That doesn't seem right to me.
Comparing the two here.
You took the word apart, huh?
Yeah, it's just, it's not clear.
Okay, well, it's not clear.
Not not what yours is, what the other is, but knowing what the intentions were, I read it as, yeah, they can. But you're reading it differently.
I see that as you can't connect any utilities.
So what what I see is.
Literal, I mean.
Almost a hundred percent of you, what do you got?
I'm okay with the way you've written up to here, but it is, three is not connected to a septic system. Except in accordance with subsection D below.
Yes.
And that seems to change the intent. Um. I think it seems to imply you can connect to a septic system.
Yeah, if you follow federal law.
All state, federal law.
All state federal laws. No, you can, no, you you can hook to a septic system. So the, it's original, and you are you reading the original four dot three?
Both of them.
Yeah, so in the original four dot three, it says you can't hook to any utilities and you can't hook to septic, right?
Except in accordance with subsection D, the sewage shall be disposed of in accordance with all applicable local, state and federal regulations. To me, it doesn't say, I mean, to me, disposed of means you go to a dump station, a licensed dump station, and you dump it.
Fair enough, that could be one way of doing it.
I know somebody who, now I guess they have pullout bins. And they were building their house and they just, you know, rolled it over to their own septic and dumped it into their septic until their house was done.
Yeah. Like, for example, yeah.
Is that within state?
Uh, I couldn't, I can't, how you dispose of your. Now that may, that may just. That's a good way to get rid of septic, but it may not be legal.
Which is silly.
But then again, the house, I mean, that's not.
Oh, right, the house isn't occupied yet, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, at my house that wouldn't work, but. We're gonna have a party, not this summer, but the next summer, and we have a lot of friends that have those little camper van things.
Yeah.
And you can bet your bippy they're plugging in and they're gonna, yeah, then they're gonna fill up with hose, and if it's breaking the law, then.
I'm just trying, but.
I'm I'm thinking this changes a lot of that, you know, to worry about it.
But so, so if it, so someone may like. And I'm fully aware that like someone could park an airstream on their property, hook it up to electric and water and put it on in one of those little slider septics. And rent it out for the weekend for eight hundred dollars a night with a beautiful.
That's what we don't want to have happen.
Okay. Okay, so is that.
So here here's the thing that is this, let's let's think about this. Talk about this, we're gonna come back next month and this is gonna be on the agenda, we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
But now you guys actually seen it ahead of time naturally.
Why don't we want someone to be able to rent that out? And why couldn't that be their? Their A D U?
Because I personally, yeah, well, you can make a camper an A D U as well, but I personally think that if we allow people to do that. It would help the locals to pay their property taxes and not have people in their houses, and they'd be able to have some money come in. Only ninety days a year, we didn't take the ninety days out, right? It allows people to do that short term rental on their property if they want, and I think that's great, and I want them to be able to do that. But do you think our constituents all feel that way as well?
I think that's a good question.
Yeah, and so when we warn it, someone who might be passionate about that may come into our meeting and talk about that.
I mean, I'm open to hearing it all, to me, it just seems. Like a no brainer.
Yeah, I.
But. Here's why I answered.
I'm fine with it as long as it, uh, the wastewater's dealt with.
Yeah, so do you, does anyone see any punctuation, sentence structure, wording they wanna have changed? So I I, this is, Jason and I worked on this, and then he changed it to, it shall be unlawful for any person to use a camper. Or other temporary structure as a camper or other temporary shelter, except in approved campground. Or residential undeveloped lots, subject to flying provisions, that first paragraph, right? The old first paragraph said park, which was very difficult.
Right, cause then you can't park down your own land.
Yeah, you got one of those little travel trailers and.
No, I didn't, I just want, I just want Michael to to look at that and see the way that how he reads it.
I'm reading it.
So can we go home and and have that?
Yeah, you can send me the provisions, or send them to me and then I'll give them to Jason.
But I think we sent him out to everyone.
Yeah.
Send out the word on. Give the word up.
Send it to one, don't communicate.
Oh, right, then we're breaking the open meeting law.
Do you have the document?
I can send you the document.
I thought we didn't matter.
If you stand on, I matter.
I'm more than.
No, it does, it falls under open meeting.
We do, okay.
So I mean, my hope was that you guys could give some notes here in the next. By our ten minutes, I could put those in, and then when Jason warns it, it'll have that verbiage. And then we can talk about it and hopefully not have to make huge changes at the meeting.
What are the utilities that you envisage for F two A or A two? Is it only connected to water system or other utilities?
Yes.
So what are the other utilities?
Uh, net fiber optic, uh, the. Low voltage copper networking, if you were putting a wifi router in, let's say you wanted to put wifi out there, network cable, electric cable, water. What else do you hook up to your house?
Well, that's what I'm asking here, because if it's only connected to a water system or electrical system.
Yeah.
Using a several connection, that's fine. Why would you need to connect?
Internet with several connection.
What, yeah, that internet, why why can't you just use a wifi router?
That's fine, you can use wifi or cell phone service wherever you want.
Yep, in my barn. You step outside the my barn door and my wifi is dead.
Yeah, I have, I built a little tiny thing in the middle of my woods, it's just a wifi router, a power runs with it, a network cable, and it puts wifi down in my woodlot. That's what I built, well, cause I did I T for six years, but so. It it, so am I to understand that you want more detail in what the.
Well, well, I'm struggling with the septic stuff.
Okay.
Understand it, okay, and I'm wondering why we even need three.
It's not connected to a septic system?
A and when you have D. Okay. I'm struggling with that.
Okay, so in the original land use rights, right, in four dot three.
And why are we limiting this to ninety days? We're limiting, limiting it to ninety days only if they are um. Not attached to full utilities.
No, ninety days is it, you can only camp in your yard ninety days.
Why?
Because. That's what the five people in the room before us came up with. It's the real answer, that's the real answer for you, Freddie, but the fact is that like.
It. At some point, you're not a camper or temporary shelter. So and then if you. But if you look. And most or most other. A few other, a lot of, a lot, a few other land use regulations that talk about this, is it's less than ninety days, it's sixty. But I thought Faceden was very. It's not talking about being a house, it's just talking about being a camper.
But about that.
At that point, it it's not under this section of the landings regulations.
Did you read subpart C?
I haven't.
Yeah, look at C, that's that's the answer to your questions. You can pull a permit.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Cause you would treat it that as if it was just a single family residence.
So you can take a camper and turn it into an A D U or a principal residence, for example, where your daughter's building. She could put a camper up there and it could be hooked up to electric and water. And she could be living in that while she builds her house and call it an A D U with a permit and hook it into the septic system if she has it.
Call it an A D U if the house isn't built.
Other, other towns are allowing that to to occur, and they're letting people build like storage sheds.
You can do temporary, you can do temporary stuff, yes.
Not temporary, they're building storage sheds slash garages and calling it an A D U or a accessory.
Upon a garage or a apartment above, we have several permits in town of Faceden that have done that.
Or just accessory.
And then when the house gets built, you do a change of use to, that becomes the A D U.
Right, it seems like um. A lot of bureaucracy.
It's a little bit of that.
Oh, so the reason why I had me to part three is cause I was trying to break.
So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we, to me, that we would be trying to eliminate, and like this man here, Mr. Fenton.
Like you look at it with the Kelly and Dan, they, that's not that one, that was built out, wasn't really built out, like, oh, that's their house. They they pulled that permit, I guess, out of the garage and apartment above, right? Grand scheme of things, for his zoning issue, you're really just a single family residence until they decide to to build that house. Um, so it can be done, on that line, you can build your garage, but a little.
Right, but people shouldn't have to play games, it should just be.
It's not really playing a game, it's just. Who? Trying to think of who just the other day I was talking about this. Well, it's the guy up there on.
Um, but can't you just switch the names? Can't the camper be the principal residence and then when you build the house, make the camper the A D U and the the thing you built?
That's what I'm saying to you.
Yeah, change use, which is exactly.
You just tied in with the the actual zoning permit for the house when they actually apply for it. Like, okay, this, this will be a, be converted to the A D U.
So, i- in in interest of keeping these meetings, you know, two hours, let's just, let's see if we can nip this one in the bud. Michael's working on some revisions, do you have any other glaring issues or questions concerning economics about it?
Not right now, but I wanna.
You wanna dive into it?
Yeah.
Right, think about it.
Yeah.
When you're not at the end of the day.
That's fair enough, um, I pushed for several connection. I don't know, I, sort of, cause I just didn't want people to hardwire their campers to their houses, you know? And I put an outlet of any size, so it, so it makes it like easier, cause sometimes people need examples. Um, yeah.
Within this section, just remember to differentiate that this is for a camper temporary shelter, and I know we were talking about. A bigger picture down the road, this section doesn't really apply to that scenario, although it can happen. Due to other sections of landing regulations. Where a camper RV can be the actual shelter, not temporary shelter.
But there's, does that involve skirting and taking the wheels off?
There's some things underwater wastewater.
Yeah.
Um, that you have to make the, you have to make it permanent, yes.
My guess is some of that has to do with weatherization.
Yeah.
But also just, the what I saw from A and R, their their guidance document was they want to see it made. Permanent before they actually issue a water wastewater for the trailer, RV or camper become a. Uh, good, it's, per me, they don't just want you to take, yeah, like, you think of a mobile home, for example, right? It's up on block, it's not rolling away without some effort.
What about all these tiny homes? Some of them are on trailers. Uh, uh, I mean, I think it's a.
But it could end up being an unlanded, an unlanded structure.
I don't know what that is.
That's a tax thing.
I don't know that.
It's a taxing, so. You ever look?
Uh, what is this document? Yeah, but how people dispose of their.
Go to the list.
Ways as long as they.
State and federal regulations.
Like condos, some obviously, but unlanded, uh, local. Confused, I don't wanna confuse it with condo stuff.
Yeah, so they would have.
Local regulations, so I'm just wondering.
RV, right there, the old store used to be there.
Shall be disposed of in accordance with all.
They even have it on separate parking. It's an unlanded. This person owns the trailer. You know, this person owns the land, it's, that's all it. I don't wanna confuse it.
Yeah, cause Mr. and Mrs. Brothers owned it, right, and then the kids.
Okay.
Like those molten. And you, I figured if I said that name, like. You know where the love. I'm worried about those two speeds.
Some parts in state or some part of the country I used to drive through. Yeah, okay, and I just imagined, I mean, I grew up in a town where we have direct drives right to the, right to the creek with the septic systems.
Yeah.
Okay, I grew up in Louisiana where we we didn't know whether alligators or turds flow.
Okay.
Okay, and I just wanna make sure I understand where this stuff is going.
Yeah.
And I see here, I ask the question, D, what does D mean? Any sewer generator or camper should be disposed in. In accordance with all applicable local, state and federal regulations, I'm trying to understand what it are. And I, and I, I think I see six point seven B, being wastewater disposal, and if that's what you're intending to do, that's.
Let's put that.
That's what I'm saying.
See six point seven B.
That's what I'm asking.
But. Why?
To help people utilize the document.
See six point seven.
They wanna, they wanna push people to the section of the L U Rs to talk.
Of subdivisions?
No, no, what is, I just asked the question, what is applicable to local, state and federal regulation for how to deal with sewage?
I'm familiar with six point seven Bs.
Six point seven.
Water supply and wastewater disposal, six point seven in our L U Rs.
Under Article Six, which is has to deal with subdivisions.
That's how to dispose of septic in a subdivision.
Okay, so.
I move that we call the meeting and come back to this.
What, what?
Yeah, we're coming back to it, isn't that?
But what are the local regulations? I'm I'm asking the question.
I think that that's a good.
I think that, I think we learned a lot from the trails hyperlink where things move and then all of a sudden we have to make all these revisions. That I don't really think we need to list exactly what section of the L U Rs, if it says. Any sewage generated has to be disposed of in accordance with local, state and federal regulations. And it's on you to figure out what the local, state and federal is, federal, federal regulations are. You can't, you're like.
Then I think as we go through this, we need to make them readily available. For people, like, let, this guy mentioned it, and I agree, let's make this a really easy document for people to use.
Yeah, so, um, the, I I've just been uh. Hunting down what would be the applicable regulation, cause when a state water is always a state, or I'm sorry, wastewater is always a state issue. At the end of the day, you gotta go to the state to get the permit, um, it would be helpful, I think, if I was gonna go do this on my land, be super helpful to. Say, reference state wastewater code, X Y Z, whatever it is. Uh, just as a, as a pointer to get you at least in the right ballpark, so that people can.
Diagrams where you had all the circles, and if yes, you point here, yeah.
You bought a piece of property in Fenton, right?
Correct, yep.
Are, are, are you, would you like to, or do you plan to put a camper on it to spend some time on it?
No, I don't currently.
Okay. Ten four, um, no, I mean, it's just people do a lot of different things to their land, but if you. Park your camper on an underproofed lot without a septic system, you need to take your septic off of that piece of property. And get rid of it.
Yep.
Like, that seems pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah, I think that's well understood, I I think the, I think where it gets funky is when there is an existing septic system on a piece of ground. That belongs, belongs to a single family home, um, and then. Uh, you introduce, you know, one, two, potentially three. Uh, campers for, who knows how much time? Then how are you impacting the existing septic system that wasn't really intended to be used for? You know, that that gets confusing, messy.
Yeah, I mean. Going to what Andrew was talking about earlier, if you have the extra capacity. I I do think that you would have to, you'd have to get an amendment. And you know, you had, like, so even if you had an A D U and you had one, one bedroom A D U. And you you had a three bedroom house with a four bedroom permit, you want to build a one room bedroom A D U, you you have the capacity, right? But you still have to get an amendment to that one way.
Yeah, I'm admitting my.
And so, and so the the trailer would sit, would be the same, would apply, same, same scenario, it's another one bedroom. Me. Heck, trailers, hey. They only have two bedrooms. I I do, I do like the little bit of vagueness in this as a C Y A. As to make sure you cover, don't spell out exactly what they have to do to get state permitting. Cause we don't know all that goes into having to get, and we shouldn't. Be here to tell everyone what they have to do, get a permit through A and R. You go on that septic page, that water wastewater page on A and R, it's, it's a lot.
Right, that's their journey, but you could direct them to the A and R site or something.
It's also important to reference the fact that like, I, it was one and two, in existing four to three, there was two items under subsection A and subsection B. I broke it out into three, so that water and electricity were a separate line than septic. Because I wanted to make sure that people knew you could connect to those things, but septic is special. But it did not change the verbiage or anything else in subsection B, like that's how the L U Rs were before.
Yeah, maybe we wanna improve it.
So when do you have to have it warned by?
It'll be warned in ten, two weeks.
Uh, yeah, it's usually I warn it, you like, you saw the email, yeah, one week before, a couple days before, and then I send it all out. Well, I think we can warn it and then have a discussion, and if people from the public have input, that's good.
Oh, there's gonna be, there's gonna be.
I don't think we're close to having a.
An answer.
An answer, but I think we can still warn it and get the public feedback. Yeah, we gotta warn this, and we can't make a decision.
Yeah. No, we're not making any decisions.
So I think we, I think we can wrap it up for today. Yeah, I think, and the other thing that was helpful is, do you have like a red line version in Word or?
I gave it to Jason, and then he gave, he changed it to this, so I will, I will send you a red line version of it more.
From the original to this?
I, like, you mean from the L U Rs?
Or 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 even also a red line version from today's, if you're gonna adjust it based on feedback.
Right, so that we all have the same information, is.
Yes.
Is that legal?
Yeah.
Must obtain and follow all local, state and federal regulations must obtain.
All right, can I make a motion to adjourn? Yeah, pretty person.
I'll second it.
Yeah, great.
All those in favor, aye.
I was just trying to think of, like, on our notice of decisions.
Mr. Fenton, thanks for coming.
Yes, very happy here.
With you.
See y'all around.
On Monday night.